I will call the regular town council meeting of January ninth, two thousand and twenty four to order. We will start with the pledge of allegiance and then we're going to ask for a moment of silence tonight in honor of all of fire department's honorary members sealed file.
I'm glad you could hear the loud United States of America, the Republic of America, one nation under God. And this all will be answered for.
Next on our agenda is proclamations and presentations, which we have none. And item five is public petitions, communications and public participation. This is on any subject within jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. And we'll go back and forth between the virtual room and the physical room and we'll start here. If there's anyone who would like to make a petition or communication, just come up to the table, state your name and address for the round.
Sean Lappin, one sixty eight Mountain Spring Road. Hello, town council. I hope everyone had a good holiday and is ready to get down to business. I have some good news to report. Recently, Mike Wilkinson reached out to me on behalf of the town to detail some work that Langen will be performing at my property in early January, some of which already occurred last week, as well as some follow-up testing that'll take place in the coming weeks. The projection of the final result analysis of these tests will be available in early February. I was very happy to hear about this progress, along with the fact that some sort of timelines are finally being established for my property. That being said, I would like to ask a few simple questions. The Langen report was completed on my property in January sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, over a year ago. Why has it taken a year to make additional progress in correcting this issue? The report from January two thousand and twenty-three did not eliminate the town as a contributor to my well contamination. And by Langen's own report stated that further analysis was needed. The report spoke of additional data needs, specifically citing, and I'm quoting, for one of the residential sites, one sixty-eight MSR, we have provided very specific recommendations and additional data needs, such as providing Langen details on the newest well specifications and drilling log, which was quoted to be three hundred and fifty feet BGS encased to sixty feet BGS. Again, the town paid for this well to be drilled and should have had the specifications on it. So why was this not provided to Langen for this report? Also, in looking at the initial scope of work between the town and Langen, and I'm quoting again, the assignment is to evaluate the current salt contamination data and make recommendations to further investigate, mitigate, remediate, and/or treat the contamination with the goal of having potable water at each identified location. This work was not fully completed in the report on one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road a year ago, and we are only now making progress in fulfilling the scope of work. Langen Engineers is not a small consulting firm, and their website speaks to them having over sixteen hundred employees and projects in over a hundred countries. So again, I asked, why has it taken this long to make some sort of progress? Because if I had to guess, it does not seem like the limitation on the part of Langen Engineering. Also, one additional item to note, last week when Langen was at my house on Thursday, it was determined that the well that was to be, that was drilled previously and it's by the town in May of two thousand and twenty-two, still had the well pump inside. This meant the geophysical survey that was scheduled to take place that day could not happen. A local water company was contacted and luckily was able to come out that very same day and remove the well pump, which is currently sitting in my garage so that it doesn't freeze. The specialist that was contracted by Langen to do the survey is an out-of-state contractor. Luckily, this person and the Langen associate were able to pivot quickly and do other work in Connecticut that day, and my well survey was completed the very next day. I would like to point this out for a couple of reasons. The first of which is that this is a simple, this is simply another unnecessary delay, and while it was only a day, it speaks to a systemic issue. This newly drilled well was paid for and installed on behalf of the town by LeFramboys in May of two thousand and twenty-two. Langen is being paid by the town to do this work, and I'm sure that their firm the particulars of what is needed for them to complete their testing. How can it oversight like? If the town was the project manager of any other project in the private sector, they would have long been fired ago and replaced with someone more competent. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak? You can raise your hand or press star nine. Uh, MG. And you maybe, can you unmute? And state your name.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Well, how you doing? This is Brian Coletti and Melody Gooden. We live at four oh six Buffcap Road. We echo all the sentiments and frustrations of the previous speaker. We were also involved in the same Langen report. And I do have a few questions for you guys as well. I mean, at this point, would any of you recommend buying a house or selling a house? Obviously, you probably want to sell a house now, but would anybody recommend buying a house to their family members or friends? Not knowing the scope of this problem and dealing with a town that seems to be kicking the can down the road till they get a study that is supportive of a narrative that might bail them out? This has been frustrating for me. We spent all our money and our savings to buy a house here six years ago. This was our dream town. We couldn't wait to get in here, and the impact was almost immediate. It wiped out all our, our extra funds. We, we had to replace pipes, parts of our furnace, a reverse osmosis system. I mean, it, it just wiped out everything. We went without buying furniture for, for a couple of years. We couldn't do the things we wanted to do. So I mean, it's a real basic question. I'm looking at the mapping of these injured or harmed homes. And Mr. Lappin's home is five point six miles from mine. The house on sixty-six Doyle is five point six miles from mine. So how many of the thousand homes between us or hundreds of homes between us have a problem they're not aware, they're not aware about? And what does a town plan to do about that? Are we going to keep silent about this issue? Think about maybe spending ARPA funds on something else, a Q project or something? If we have federal money, is there a chance we can use ARPA funds to rectify the problem in town? You know, doctors have this, this, this age-old adism next to their, their, their honorable name, and the adage is do no harm. And you know, as we have people in, in, in town who had to deal with the travesty and tragic nature of the cement issues, that was a private company. And that company went bankrupt. These same homeowners, many of them are dealing with a water issue. And it looks like in two thousand and seventeen, there was a problem. And the report states this. So going forward, can we please stop talking about reports and start to get to into some real serious resolutions to these issues? I want to recommend this town. I want to recommend people come and move here to this community. But at this point, we are terrified that we won't be able to sell our home. I feel bad for Sean. He's been the most public person on this issue. He, how does he sell his house at this point? I understand it's a very uncomfortable question and, and situation for a town board member to deal with because, of course, you want to not have this issue out into the public eye. But I think we're, we're past that. It looks like there was an issue in two thousand and seventeen where the town ruined our wells, and it's time to start having some action. I have to recycle a thousand cardboard boxes every month because we get water delivered to our house. We live out of water jugs. That's an impact nobody should have to deal with in a, in a, in a first-world country, but here we are. And we pay a lot of taxes in town. And this is what we're dealing with. So again, I just want to ask the board, knowing that there's a problem in town with the water wells, not just specific to one area, the vineyards, would you recommend people buy a house in town? And if so, do you feel any obligation to let them know you may incur a water problem, which is expensive and detrimental to your ability to sell the house possibly in the future? Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Um, could, I don't know who's controlling the Zoom, but could we turn Chris Moran's video on when someone gets a chance? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak at this point?
I have some gifts, actually, too. I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Jody Coleman Marziella. I live at seventy-nine Tolland Green, right down here in the V, and I'm also chair of the Historic District Commission. I just wanted to let you know a couple of highlights that we had accomplished this past year. We had eleven applications for COAs, and we granted all eleven of them. Our most recent one was the solar panels on the United Congregation Church. They're putting seventy-five on an array down and back, not visible from the street. And they also are installing twenty-six on the roof of the church itself, which will be minimally visible. We also accomplished this year, made a design guideline with the guidance of the State Historic Preservation Office. We modeled some of the information from Glassingberry Historic District, as well as Weathersfield Historic District, Guilford, Connecticut Historic District, and another one in South Carolina. We utilized the high school print media shop to do our books at a bargain price. We shopped local. I actually work at the high school. I've done an employee of the Board of Education. I've worked in every single public school we have here for the last fifteen years. So I was really wonderful to educate and provide information to the students at the high school as well. So I just wanted to give you all these books. Me and I approach, and just give you these books. And they're not perfect. This was the first time the high school ever did a magazine like this. But it was very fun.
So thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you. And I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know who I am. Thank you.
Thanks, Jody. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak at this time? Anyone else in the room? All right, not seeing anyone. We will move on to item six agenda, which is public hearing items, of which there is none. And then seven A reports of words of committees responsible to the council. You want to start with ARPA?
Sure. Well, okay, you need us two of those items are on tonight. Well, in chair, and today you got the vice chair. Same thing with the Firehouse Subcommittee, which is great. So tonight, we hopefully will be approving two items on here. Later on, Brian and I'm sure Lisa will go over those two specific items that the Public Works Department is looking for, looking for. So that was really, that was the biggest thing. Actually, and the other thing, I apologize, is currently in the ARPA funds, we had approved last council for one hundred thousand dollars for ADA sidewalk on the green. And there was a recommendation from the new Subcommittee to put that back into the upper funds because we're not sure how long it will take to work on some issues that were coming. So that actually are two. Then say anything, Jacob or Brian. Okay. And then. Do you want me to the Firehouse one too? You wanted.
Really quick, does anybody have any ARPA questions? I know we have two item agendas, but no ARPA questions in this line. Okay, thank you.
You're gonna find Jacob. I utilize. So anyways, again, Jacob and I, vice chair and chair, which we're excited about, and we have a lot to learn about. And honestly, Brian and our chief's here too. They have any additional things that the chair doesn't mind to let them see. So in terms of Station three forty, the building has arrived, as far as I know. The material at least, we're still waiting for equipment on there to start that process. Is that correct, Brian?
Um, the, the structure, drive by it. It's there.
Is it up though? Like?
Yeah.
Oh, it is. I drove by the other day.
I drove by it this morning. It wasn't. I drove by it today and it was.
Oh, great.
So obviously very quick.
We're having a great job.
Yeah. There's a, there's a, there's a frame.
That's great.
Group, you know, that, that, you know, it's there.
It's there because the finish date is supposed to be the contracting date is March fifteenth.
Not likely, but not much further out than there.
Um, I think. I understood right. So then there's an overview from bond in the stations, one forty and four forty for the remainder of the balance. What's causing that bottom of the station they're working on? Believe that the fire department is working on some regulations. And once a draft is completed, it should be coming to the Subcommittee to review it, and that will come to the council. If I miss anything.
Yep. Any questions about? Chris? Good, okay. Roads all tap bars. Would you like me to give that update?
Your pleasure.
Okay. I think, have we publicly noticed the information session?
I'm happy for you to do so.
Okay.
Loosely, just whatever, in case something changes, we'll stay posted. Loosely, it's for the twenty.
Yes. So right now, tentatively, we have a public information scheduled for January twenty fifth. Do I have that right?
You do.
Okay, excellent. Six thirty in council chambers. The intention of this meeting is to provide additional information to the public from the town, from deep, from Eastern Highland Health, and to talk about how the town is going to move forward, especially in areas of extreme concentration of contaminated bugs. So that, that is really good news that we are progressing rather things are moving forward. Anything else?
Sure. DOT, DPH will also have a hand in the meeting too.
Excellent.
I believe we will advertise the heck out of it. We'll do it on E-Blast, social media, to make sure that anyone involved will be there. This is largely due to the efforts from residents to requesting more transparency. And then also from you and State Rep Nuccio to get these meetings public, which is something we all embrace. But we also have a lot of things to consider as the best respect, the respect of the entire town. And we look to continue that. This is not, hopefully not a one-off. This is the kind of the norm moving forward, and we'll have more of these meetings. And the town itself will talk about a lot of things that we're doing, that you're doing. And the Eastern Highlands, very happy with Eastern Highlands, and I hadn't been. And then they came to the meeting and they really stepped up the plate. I met with Rob Miller last week and discussed exactly all this. We are going to need their assistance moving forward, especially in the realm of the, the water softener systems and looking down the road, how to prevent these types of situations happening in neighborhoods moving forward. So all good stuff coming out of the solid, the task force.
Any questions about that? Yeah, okay. So we will, we will move on then to reports of town or council liaisons. Chris, can we start with you? They have to ask him that.
Or he, or he has, he should be able to tell on you.
There you go.
Yeah, thanks. So I attended the planning and zoning meeting yesterday. The big thing they have, they spoke, I think they're sort of in the early stages, talking to a developer to develop a multifamily development. I think the address is one ninety-five Parkford Turnpike. They're, the developer was tentatively thinking of doing sort of individual units, maybe condo style. They're still sort of working that out, figuring out whether affordable housing is going to be built into that or not. So they're sort of in the early stages of that, but it sounds like a great project. And the other thing that overlaps of planning and zoning is, in the town council, is that they have a goal to update the inventory of town-owned property, and I think that's something that we might be discussing as well as adding a goal. But it's certainly something that I think we can work collaboratively with planning and zoning, which would be great. And that's all I have.
Wonderful. Thanks, Chris. Jen, you want to go next?
Sure. So Permanent Celebration Committee think that in December the twenty-first, they went over their most recent event, which was the tree lighting, which was a huge success. They felt like everyone had a lovely good time. There was a great turnout. Couple of issues that they had with the event, one was, I guess garbage cans weren't delivered when they had requested them, but it didn't seem like too big of a deal. The bigger issue they saw was that people were walking and kind of hanging out on Carriage Road. And they had made mention that maybe we need to look into closing that road down during this event in the future because people just assumed that road was closed. The next event on their list is the Memorial Day Parade. That's going to be happening on May twenty-sixth of this year. Main concern with that is budgeting issues, and specifically with the temporary sidewalk. They weren't sure if they would have to pay for the sidewalks we put down and pick back up. Definitely not having a permanent structure there is, is a huge disadvantage, and we're seeing that. So that's, that's definitely affecting their budget this year and, and you know, would have to be taken into consideration as far as whether or not they'd be doing all that they need to do for the event. So I guess our main question is, is whether or not they have to be paying for the sidewalks to be put down and taken back up.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, so did you have any meetings? No.
Nope.
I'm really, no, that's me. Actually, I talked to Brian earlier. Chief Patel's here, so it's great.
So last night, the Recreation Advisory Board, there's a young kid, Ben Patterson's his name. He's discussing the Eagle Scout project, and one of them, or is, and Bruce decided to talk to you, Chief Patel, is along the trail systems, possibly putting up some red markers or aluminum markers, so if there's an accident with somebody, resident or somebody, they twist their ankle, they need nine-one-one and somebody to come out, first responder, at least there'll be a marker that will help narrow down where they might be. So, so I think that's a good idea.
I love it.
I think it really is. So sorry, Chief Patel, you might have a little bit over.
I'll help too. I'm going to collapse on those trails in one of these days. Just come get me.
No, it's, it's a really good idea. It's really cool listening to them. From the Director's Report, which is Bruce Watt, the ice cream rink has been set up at Croweville Park. Hopefully, snow will be icy enough to actually use the ice cream. All basketball leagues are playing games. We went over, they went over the field assessment with all the fields in town, and they are going to be submitted to the, to Scott and Brian, their recommendations, what needs help in those fields, which is a shortlist. Other than that, that's it.
Awesome. I did not have any meetings either. Oh, that's actually not true. I'm sorry. The CROG Advisory Policy Board met a couple of weeks ago and had a certification from Advanced CT on the work Advanced CT does to support businesses throughout towns. And we have another meeting coming tomorrow. And I was not able to attend the Eastern Highland Health District meeting as I, I got a, or a bad concert. So unfortunately, couldn't be in two places at once.
Okay.
All right. Next on our agenda is new business. Eight-one is a consideration of a resolution to approve a bid waiver for the purchase of the grader. Brian, you want to?
Yep.
Tease up here?
Um, as you know, we've approved the purchase of a used grader, and grader is something that we use to keep our unimproved dirt points in decent shape following a winter or following a particularly rainy event. And typically, we had previously contracted out for said grader. In most cases, we would go out to bid for a piece of general type of new equipment. This is used. I have Director Lappin here to, from DPW to explain further why we are not, why we are requesting that council approve and no bid in this, with the purchase of this grader. Director Lappin?
Thank you. When we go for a sealed bid, it's for a specific item. For us to try to find a specific used item is going to be virtually impossible. Need to have some flexibility as far as the age of the piece of equipment, condition of the piece of equipment. I have known this company, it's called Sales Auction Company LLC in Winter Locks for probably fifteen years. They've been running successful auctions for the last ten, ten years in Winter Locks. They go to Florida in February, and they've assured me that there's more than likely a grader that beat our needs down there. It'll be in better shape. You'd be paying less money for it just because it's not exposed to the winter weather, the salt, what that'd be down there. And prices of equipment up here, check. They act as a dealer on the part of the town. They perform visual inspections, they review all the maintenance documents to make sure that it's something that's in good shape. Again, I've known these, these gentlemen for many, many years. They wouldn't steer us wrong. The issue is, while they're in Florida, if they find something, they have to act that way. It's not something they can say, okay, Scott, we have this. And depending on the timing, I come back to the council and say, I'd like to buy this piece of equipment. By the time I get back to them, that piece of equipment will be gone.
Does anyone have any questions?
Where is that in Florida?
I didn't ask them where specifically, or do they go?
They aren't, weren't they holding any equipment?
No, they don't, only because it's a foreign piece to them, but they review the documentation. So she makes sure that there's no obvious damage or signs of extreme wear and tear.
Because I know it's some of those in Florida, they'll use them on the beaches. To grade out the beaches where there's storm erosion, things like that. And one thing you don't want is one of those because that thing's been exposed to the salt water.
Right.
So.
Yeah, they.
Make sure they look for that.
Right.
Careful.
Yeah, I specifically told them we wanted something that had exposed anything such as that. That's why they vote for it to be the safest for us.
Yeah.
Any idea what the price? I know, I know we budgeted one hundred and ten thousand. Any idea what?
They feel that it'll come in much less than that, probably in seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars.
We like the hair.
That's a lot.
Did you have a question? Interesting. Um, I have a question. Should we? It makes sense to me that we would not go out to bid for a used piece of equipment. I, that rings, that gut checks really well with me. I wonder, have we considered going out to bid for dealer services, however?
What do you mean?
Well, is there, if there's a there's going to be some sort of a cost associated with using this dealer, whether it's included in the equipment or it's a separate line item, using a particular dealer. We're using one based on Scott's experience, which I have full trust in.
Yep.
However, we are selecting a particular company to do our work. And so my question is, should we be going out to bid for those services as opposed to using one at the sole recommendation of our Public Works Director?
How, I guess I confuse how we go out to bid to a dealer or someone who deals in that sort of thing. It's, we don't know when we'd pay them.
Okay.
And I guess, Scott, do they take a percentage?
They take a small percentage, yes.
So the bid would be to what percentage?
Yep.
I can't imagine there'd be a lot of flexibility in that event. I would much prefer the trust and experience that Director Lappin has than jump into somebody new who's willing to take a smaller percentage.
Okay.
Thoughts?
The, the other issue is there are not many auctioneers
Yeah.
in the state of Connecticut. We just, last year, I believe it was, we had a local contractor who shut this construction business down. These people came down and they ran the auction for them. And they, they go all over the state selling these things. And they run very successful businesses, both online and at their site.
Yeah, I'm, I am in favor of using your recommended dealer. I just know that, you know, we have these bid requirements in our policy for a reason. And so I think if we're not going to go to bid, we should just put on the record why we decided not to. What happens if the grader comes back under the allocation that we inferred?
Start the other ARPA funds.
Back to the ARPA funds. Awesome. We like that. Awesome. We like that. And what what kind of a timeframe, I'm sorry, I didn't write down, what kind of a timeframe were you looking at?
They're they're planning it down in uh February.
February, so we would know maybe by the end of February, early August.
If they plan to call me if they find something and they'll send me pictures and what have you. That's a right one, Brian.
That sounds so exciting. Yeah.
Not as exciting as if I was going down in rhythm.
Yeah.
Especially in February.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
The incurred cost for getting that machine here.
It depends on what else they've got being involved up here. If they can get two pieces of equipment on a low boy, then that's a there we go. Gonna do by itself.
Is that separate, a separate line?
That will all be included in their their one price tonight. I can get it itemized as far as delivery.
Hopefully, we'll have cheaper gas, but. That's all.
All right. Is there then a motion to approve the resolution in item eight point one?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you for calling me the motion. Is there a second? Jen's second to most of them. Is there any further discussion? No, we're gonna do roll call vote because we're hybrid this evening. We'll start with you, Chris.
You should be allowed to mute now.
Oh, now I can. Uh yes.
I am an I, so that is unanimous. Thank you. Good machine. Uh the next item is uh fire and public safety introduction to council.
Okay, as you know, um with the the new council coming on. I try to get my department heads uh in here to A, introduce themselves, uh B, talk about uh what their department does. Uh and some of the structure and framework of their department and operation. So uh with that, I have Chief Whitel here uh to present and for. Uh the Tallent Fire Department. He's also our Public Safety Director and our Emergency Management Director, Fire Chief. Am I missing anything, John?
Free you, I mean, the other, tell me stuff.
All around good guy. So um Chief Whitel, come on up if you want and uh talk to council.
First, obviously, welcome and congratulations on some reelections and some new. Um I think most of yous made the uh the council tour that we had, and I handed you guys the packet. That we have recently updated as far as the apparatus and what we operate. And that was basically just the the fire apparatus and the fire department stuff. For yous that didn't make it, I obviously offered to make nights, weekends, any other time you wanna. Beat up or take a tour or see the uh the operations, uh we'll make ourselves available for that. You obviously got the scope of the projects of everything that's in there. Everything's been updated. Obviously, everything's changing with the next uh landing and the firehouse communities and stuff like that. We're making progress on station one forty, next scheduled meetings to go over. Obviously, one forty and four forty and see where we are and as far as the scope of what we can do uh with what's left there. As far as personnel, we're we're Accommodation Department, we could stay sitting there, um the members, everything else that we have. Um we're very successful with Yukon program. Um I was obviously honored last year to get appointed to the. Yukon Fire Rescue Board, uh Board of Directors down there. Um so I meet with them several times a year. And are very fortunate to recruit a lot of those Yukon members uh throughout the school year. Hertz at summertime, they all go back home, but uh we've recruited a few of them that have moved locally. Either neighboring towns or locally herewise and uh have stayed on and rejoined or stayed here with us. So uh we've been fortunate with that. I did not give you the rest of the packets for the other uh operations, obviously the animal control or. Facilities or staffing nearwise. Um and we've been very successful with the CERT program uh that we have that has been very. I think forthcoming in the past year or two with a lot of the community events uh helping out, um filling in the voids and filling in stuff. So. Other than that, there's, everything that I have is pretty much in that booklet for you. If there's any specifics that's coming up or we're obviously streamlining. If you ask me any questions, we start with the apparatus that is in the scheduled book. I will tell you that, yes, the plants are open. I still don't have a bid number for you. So. Uh obviously, we're two years for the ambulances and we still don't have a bid number, but they are building anywhere between eight to eleven. Chassis a week, so we're, I was promised uh just last week that maybe we'll see a bid number come February. Then shortly thereafter. But uh with that being said, both the ambulances are maximizing the mileage and. Uh we've been keeping you guys abreast as far as when uh one's out or one's in. And obviously, it's been very fortunate to use approved uh a backup ambulance to slide in place. Cause we never know what's gonna end up happening with storms or breakdowns or anything like that. But in our industry, like most of the other industries. Prices have gone through the roof and there's sure still still shortages, uh waiting for items or not on the shelf. I don't know why, but uh we're still battling with that aspect uh as we deal with anything. So uh we're plugging along. We have a couple of projects coming up down the pike that's uh obviously coming out in your capital budgets for the next month and stuff like that. We've been successful, but uh it's been it's been a long year, taxed off a lot of people. We had a lot of good products and a lot of good things that happened and. We were fortunate to find a couple uh items that, you know, really took a huge burden off uh. Capital projects and the rest of the stuff. So we do what we can. And we're keeping an eye on any surplus stuff that comes out like we normally do. I know. Uh our town manager uh was privy to one of the last surpluses back at state level when uh. The COVID ended and stuff like that. We brought a lot of stuff back and um. The only new news is that we were able to get first girl from the onboard with the shelter wise as a backup and we're moving forward to. You know, pre-plan and put assets into the right places. So as the town grows, we can kind of support it or be there, but uh. We're obviously just trying to manage stuff. We're just in a, we're in a grid holding pattern until we get station three forty going here. Um because that will be a huge uh move some stuff around and get some things moving and then we'll tackle obviously station one forty and. Four forty and we'll have to come up with a game plan, the subcommittee and the council, obviously, as we tackle that, station one forty is gonna be a. Gonna be a big project to tackle, uh depending on which direction we go in. So uh. We're obviously gonna work with Elias and look forward to working with Elias and like I said, my office stands there as far as. We have an open door, obviously through my boss, but anytime that you're more than welcome to come down and. Uh look at the apparatus or, you know, take a look if you get a chance to see the ladder truck. I know some of yous did at the last community event, but um. We're we're on board with everything and moving forward. So so the storms are not helping. The storms are taxing out. The last windstorm was over forty to fifty calls and. We'll see what happens tonight and over the next couple of days. Um I'm sure I'll be waking up to Scott sometime early this morning. But you know, obviously, we'll see what happens with the weather and the rest of the stuff. So. Don't know how far you want me to dovetail into everything, boss.
Do want to find, they'll probably have some specific questions for you. Anytime you wanna let them jump in, that's great.
Well, that's what we're gonna pull up.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Alex.
So it seems like uh maybe you can answer this question for, you know, town members and and for us as well, but. It seems like for the majority of the paragraphs we have here, you know, fire training center needs sufficient storage space. Uh two forty, uh more space for record keeping. And I know that. One forty, I might be a little biased, but one forty has an outcropping of a barnyard structure that's pretty large for you guys to go for a distance of storage. Do you think that you guys would rather have more storage space for the buildings that you have there already? Add into that structure, are you guys comfortable with? Outcropping, though you think that's sufficient, have some kind of outcropping building, like a garage? From a local company. What's your view on that?
So to kind of answer that, we actually went after uh. Two units, about four to five. And they, and those are behind one, one of those facilities is behind a trading center. It's basically a two bay garage. We were able to work with a uh. A local company or a local resident owns a a local business, uh in a jazz in town and we were able to get uh. That is a a good market price, but we were able to get two of the garage units put together for a lot of the storage. And it's already maximized, um just because of, we tried to pull a lot of the fire gear. And then I also have CERT, that's on my, so. You know, everyone looks at the fire department, but we're a common kind of department where we're running emergency management, we're running fire, we're running CERT. We're running animal control. So there's a lot of various things that are stored at the different various sites. It'd be nice to have those offsites, you know, obviously someday AC power, you know, they have power, but an AC and humidified stuff because. We took a lot of our fire gear out of the firehouses because they were stored in apparatus space. And the price of fire gear at fifty five hundred dollars a set of gear and you get ten fifteen sets, you're you're at fifty thousand dollars a gear that's sitting there. That mice could be playing with and the rest of the stuff. So we were able to put it, you know, the other stuff over at the Crystal Lake Firehouse that has the same setup. Running humidifiers, training them left and right and keeping everything up. But as far as, you know, the training center, station two forty. You know, the two forty started in the early seventies at the two bay and then we just put Band-Aids and added and added and added. There was a study on that property and the training center um just about eleven years ago. Because we were looking to uh work with the Economic Commission, the town and the rest of the stuff, and we were looking at different pieces of property back in the time when Parker closed. And we were looking at cross farms and there was a lot of various ideas and uh stuff like that. So um. You know, obviously, the training center and station two before you have to go together because when we closed Leonard's Corners back in the early nineties, that's when the town said, no, we want the. Training center located centrally in the town. Um and that's when the town took. That piece of property where the training center is by uh intimate domain because the last business that was operating there was Cat Pizza when they had a fire. So that used to be a Cumberland Farms uh insurance agency and stuff like that. So that. We just basically propped a building on a cement pad. So you got what you got. And you know, even the animal control officers' office was there for a few years, so. We went to a deputy fire marshal, you know, we started adding on staff wise and storage and records, obviously. Just pile and pile and pile and as your quality levels go up, you can only store so much up in the attic and you can store so you store so much in the back of the room. So. You know, there's there's that. And then as your, you know, different staffing levels grow. Your training room kind of shrinks as far as running a lot of the training that's there. Um keep in mind that that is your main ELC. Uh we do rent out that training center to, you know, certain groups so uh to use for meeting purposes only. But it takes over four to five hours to set that ELC up. And hopefully, they don't have to set it up tonight. Scott's next to me tomorrow morning. But it takes it takes a while to set that up. And then station two forty, obviously, lower bays. And then you have two higher bays, so you can't just switch apparatus and there's uh really technically no drive through bays that are right that far. So you know, that's gonna be a scope of a project down the road, whether, you know, commercially someone buys that type of property and we relocate and build. You know, one building, two layers or, you know, side by side uh as we move forward. Obviously, I think the new station three forty will be something for an eye opener for a lot of people as far as the building and the type of usage and, you know. How much space and all that type of stuff as we move forward. Station one forty obviously was the newest station that was built. But as you're getting into the two thousands and eras, uh you're looking at starting to staff. Different people for storms or overnights or different types of things. Um it would be nice and that's what the plan originally was supposed to be to. Add another partial training room that could be separated to to hold over or uh have rest areas uh for people to stay. And that type of stuff. So and also backup ELC if I had to move locations back and forth, especially now that we have the fiber. So the fiber runs. Obviously, from the center of town and we have a link that goes to the Crystal Lake Road Firehouse down the Old Post Road. So kind of where we end up being. You know, obviously, we're very fortunate with the residents and the process of what approved, but. Then we struck, we struck a lot of stuff and then prices just went and the pot just kind of shrunk. So answer it?
Sure. Future ideas for storage, maybe? Getting you uh more of an ample space or is that something that's done still?
As far as, as far as, I think you'll have a good eye opener as far as that type of building that's being put up at station uh one forty. Or three forty. Uh I know you guys did and Scott, Scott did a nice outside building as far as a pad and. I forgot to put that up, the steel building that was up there. But that's kind of what you need, especially if you go into a, you know, an emergency operations avenue and we have to hand out water, storage or. Cots and that type of stuff you got somewhere.
Sure.
The town is in, I I'm not the only department. You could probably ask the Recreation Department. You could probably ask any department. Storage has always been a a huge asset of almost any community. We just never have enough. So, make sense?
Yes.
Thank you.
I was just gonna ask about animal control. We don't hear much about that. I mean, how are the facilities doing? What what's your take on that?
It's interesting you ask that. Um so some new regulations just came out from the state as far as uh. Animal control regulations and that kind of stuff. We're gonna be reviewing it and looking at it. We've looked at different options as far as uh. Around different places and and looking at different avenues. You seriously do get a huge bang for your buck of what we have for two part timers. And the calls heavily, you ask me for a call record now, it's quiet, it's slow, everybody's windows are closed. Bad weather, there's snow. As soon as that spring, that early season comes, then that's when you get the barking dog complaints and that type of stuff, but. They're busy and we only, we not only deal with just uh, you know, obviously dogs. We'll get it, we have to meet the state regulations as far as uh. Cats uh and then as well as we do a livestock list to about the town. And there's a lot more different types of animals that people are starting to have at their houses as far as. Snakes, pigs, horses, llamas, um every once in a while we'll get a llama running down the road or something else wise. And I don't have no huge eating field or anything like that. So. We do the best we can. We deal with a lot of local people and I tell you, the the residents are great that, you know, have a horse or different types of stuff. We've had people come out and assist us with. Getting the animals and we've never, knock on wood, had anybody hurt or anything else, but um we managed to get through. Um but every town's struggling in that department as well. You know, as far as staffing and, you know, equipment and stuff like that, we're very fortunate that we probably replaced the truck a few years ago. So the truck is up and. Running and uh that type, you know, it's good. But um. You know, unfortunately, sometimes there's some dangerous dogs and they're good tips and stuff, but we're, we've got a good policy as far as adoption and working with a lot of rescues and a lot of different groups. And they do a great job on their Facebook page and residents come out of the woodwork when something's missing or and they help each other and. You know, I think there was one that was, I think it was a German Shepherd that was missing on Mile Hill Road this past weekend. My phone was lit enough like a Christmas tree, so um it went around, you know what I mean? So it's great that that type of stuff works and. You can't, you you can't be the speed of social media. But there's a lot of new requirements that we added. There, they probably have a radio that you guys approved a few years ago in the budget, so they have, they're always in a radio contact. Cause during the day, they text me if they're running from the state lab or they call me on the radio if there's a backup, but now they always have a radio. So if they leave town or they're on the air. They communicate right with the nine one one center. So at least they keep a record and you have a human right right there. But some additional costs because they fall under that um unfortunately, that law enforcement type of category. So there were in the body cameras and there were in that type of stuff. So um. You know, regulations and laws change every single year and we have to keep watching which ones are changing and which ones are coming and going. So.
And the facility is adequate and you repair it.
We looked at it a few years ago. Um like I said, every council's been different over the last ten fifteen years and everyone comes up with a. You know, an agenda and a list and you prioritize and it's everyone looking at the piece of, you know, cutting the pie and the divin- dividends up. So uh down the road, obviously, it'd be nice to, you know, um. Replace or make some improvements or stuff like that. I think down the road, we're we're gonna have to. And I'll be reviewing that with uh Brian and it it's definitely not gonna make the capital lineup. We're already past the the time and the threshold for that, but. It's just, there's only so much of that pot that goes around and we're, we try to be fair with all the departments, you know?
Thank you very much.
You got it.
So I I know, John, you've been with the the department a long time. I'm just kind of wondering like, how does like the mix of the call? Like the types of calls vary from like when you started to now? Are you seeing more car accidents, medical calls? Or is it about the same?
Fires obviously were different. And when I started to to cover the monoxide calls and those type of things weren't there and as technology has changed and houses are built. They're they're made tighter and air tighter and now you have a lot more C O calls that you're different levels of uh this time of the year. Um obviously economic, you know, plays a huge impact. As far as people disconnecting fire alarms and not going with systems and different types of things. Um and then regulations change that now also you're gonna replace every C O detector, every smoke detector every ten years. So a lot more service calls of going out for false alarms or uh looking at that type of aspect. But as far as the nature of the calls, um you know, everyone, everyone targets that I E four. It's been here a long time and we've had our major tractor trailers. You know, we've sat on, I've sat on numerous boards with uh Steve Warner. Uh as far as the state and they made some serious huge improvements back in the day when we had some serious tractor trailer rollers. And different items that they made some huge improvements as far as putting guardrails. And we've lessened the vehicles going over the uh guardrails. And as you see, the state's making a huge improvement now clearing a a lot of the sudden brush, which would probably be a better sight line. Um and I'm not a a a I'm not a weather forecaster or economic or anything else wise. But Talon is known as a Talon Triangle from sixty seven to sixty nine and it's like that wind tunnel. So um you know, fortunately Friday night that tractor trailer made it past sixty seven. And I contacted the boys in Vernon's and just made it over the bridge, guys. It's yours. Um so it's usually in that same, that same area, sixty select, right? In that same sixty six, it's we're we're in that area. But you know, you have somewhat of a wind tunnel where a lot of people go out and I'm not saying anything negatively against anybody at all. But they they start towing a camper, they come down that hill in those areas, it's they get a little sidetracked. Um plus you get a fog and you get a you get a different weather pattern in those two areas. And um you know, knock on wood, uh we haven't had any of our uh people seriously hurt. And uh we do, we do stock that area and back up the highway and we try to take as many leads as we can. And I know the state's not too happy when I end up doing that, but uh we have to, so you know, it's uh. We're not promoting businesses when I close the highway down for appetites and all the restaurants to get a a lot busier. But people know as soon as something happens, it's it's gridlocked around here, you know? Um either here or Lafayette Square, so um we've had those calls. But uh since my tenure in the department as we move forward, um. Um society and a lot of stuff has changed and um. A lot, we've had a lot of, we've had a lot of bad calls. We've had a lot of, a lot of tragedies uh that I never would have thought I would have seen in my. Uh career wise going through, especially when you have that many um in a week and a half. Uh so we've had, we've had a, we we had a, we had a long bout there that we had a long couple of years of. Um some serious tragedies in town, a lot of losses and and it was really sad and took a lot of, took a lot of, took a lot of beating on a lot of people. And we've lost some people uh just because it just. Stinks, especially when you you live in town, you grow up or you know the people or something else wise, it it hits home, you know? So um no difference in the summers, you know, God, I was over there um. So we all go through it, but as far as the stuff, a lot, you're gonna see a lot more medical and a lot more service that type of uh genders going forth as we move forward. Um the fires are obviously devastating when they come. Um we have a, we're we're fortunate and I'm not saying anything about any of the department, but we have a great fire prevention program. We start in early uh the end of September and and we actually go into the middle of November. We hit every individual class and preschool that is there and has had a huge success. Uh with less nine one one faith false calls, uh early calls coming in from uh younger children, younger kids. So if we can just get the explorer program up and running again, we're one, we're one member short, spread the word. We're one member short for me to get it going. Um but once we get that going, that's been a huge recruitment tool as well. Um but as we move forth, uh technology is changing and we're facing uh electronics nowadays. So the new hybrids, the new batteries are um. An everyday learning experience that uh is is gonna be difficult to deal with as we as we move through. So can I answer it?
Yeah, it's helpful to see how things have changed and what the needs needs are as as time progresses and challenges, so thank you. Any questions?
Uh yeah. Thank you for coming in. Assistant Chief is also here, so thank you both for being here. Like anybody else, company T F Ds online, thank you if they are. Um I mean, I understand a couple of the capital items in there, but I know there's a few new faces here that weren't able to join us on the. Tour, so. Um could you explain the squad truck and why you need the squad truck? I know we kind of do it last year and unfortunately we didn't pay you. I'm glad it's back in the capital budget. Um so I was hoping that the Jen, Alex and Joe, you could just highlight the importance of that apparatus.
Sure, so um like you've seen your packet, it has the most recent one that uh was purchased. So uh when our director got here, we obviously went through the asset uh of the departments and stuff like that. Um and there's different factors that play into equipment and apparatus as far as I S O insurance ratings and different types of stuff. So uh Brian's always wanted to be down to that five number and and we we met it with going to a squad concept. And the reason behind that is we let the chips fall out in all the other towns around. And and we did a very large demo at the training center that we had um. Probably approximately thirteen, fourteen different various departments that obviously went to squad concept and all different years. And it was great to see that many different types of apparatus and different types of vehicles. And taking everything and putting it into what would work for Talon. So going to a squad concept um is basically your rescue. Is a is a, you know, a heavy duty rescue. So years ago, we used to buy an engine tank, which is a fire truck that carries a thousand gallons of water. Rescue truck carries all your heavy duty equipment, your hearse tools. Well, technology has also changed as we've progressed through the years where now everything is all electronic, everything's battery wise. So no more big uh hy- hydraulic hoses, no more big portable pumps on rescue trucks. So where your stuff a couple of years ago, you should take two compartments, two and a half compartments. You're down to one compartment and now you can maximize a lot more space savings um as you move forward. So and and it it saved a lot of space because a lot of people say, well, how much space can it save? Your hydraulic pumps is basically one compartment and then you have hydraulic board reels that hang down and it takes up the whole space. Now you're dealing with the tool with the battery that you charge and you plug in, uh swap out the batteries and swap out the stuff. Um so that's why we went to that squad concept because now you don't have to buy two trucks. It's basically one truck into two, it's two trucks into one truck. Um and it's obviously vendor specific where when you start mentioning different types of words. If you want a heavy duty rescue, you're gonna pay for that. If you want a Cadillac, you're gonna pay for a Cadillac. You want a Kia, you pay for Kia. It's that type where when you specify your specs and different types of things. You gotta specify in that aspect because they know that squad concept pretty much meets your your rescue and your your pumper. Um so you get two trucks in one. Also shortages of personnel are going down. So before you used to have to run a rescue truck out with a couple of guys, an engine tank used to follow it, now you're banged into one apparatus. So that's the reasoning going forth in that direction. Um it'd be ideally to always have one on that side of town and one on this side of town, similar to what we did when we sold the rescue before. We were going after that light duty rescue truck and the light duty rescue truck was over at uh the Crystal Lake Firehouse. Um but the prices have also gone through the roof. So your normal engine tanks back in nineteen ninety three were twenty twenty five thousand dollars. Now they're at, now now your normal engine tanks at seven hundred and seventy thousand and your heavy duty rescues are anywhere from eight fifty to one point one million.
Um and it's about two years to get.
By the time you stop, by the time you end up signing something and they have a build out date and all that. By the time the manufacturer builds a chassis and then delivers it to the vendor to do the squad uh body on it and outfit it, yeah.
Well, so we're gonna be going down to five apparatus prices.
You're at four engine tanks right now in one squad.
So, so are we selling any of the?
The plan is to go down to two squads and two engine tanks.
So we're gonna be releasing one, but.
But that's years away because.
By the time you get it, by the time you just, you just.
Yeah.
By the time you order it and stuff like that.
Yeah, I was just wondering, my next question.
The consultant report might say, fine.
Same, yeah.
So um we have some cushion and some time and John's kind of very flexible and he talked me into the squad, but I think it's. You need to squat at the highway and a discussion, um so um to to send one squad out onto the highway. It's so much faster and quicker than having roust out two. Um it's just a good move and our highway obviously. Has financial bearing on um some of our funds as well, so.
Yeah, I was just gonna, my question was just gonna be, when you sell it, that does that money, that I assume is going back into the ambulance?
At least when you sell it or.
That sounds like a fair.
He comes would be happy with that and I see the um backup ambulance um we have, it looks great. Um is that all set to go? No, Katie, I think.
It's in service.
Oh, it is in service. Great. So have you, since we've gotten backup one? Does the other two function? Fine, I know we had issues.
You wanna honest answers?
No.
No, we want lies.
So the new ambulance is obviously a new ambulance. It comes with the, obviously it's got less miles, it drives nice, it rides nice. And it's also got the newer requirements with the power load system, which is a new requirement once you buy a new ambulance. So the power load system is basically the stretcher that has a lot more bells and whistles on it. But it's got the power load that comes out, drops it, and then when you go to load it, you you it you don't have to get four guys to, it power loads it. So it's in service tonight and I begged the membership last night at the meeting to just bear with us. And you know, once we're gonna leave that as a spare, but I'm sure a lot of people are gonna say, oh, this is nice. The new ambulances are specked out because they're new and they're coming with that type of unit. But those units are just, it's, it's a, it's a advocate protection, workers comp. Anything else wise lifting off the stretchers are so heavy and, you know, that type of stuff, so um right now, I love it.
That's right.
So um we just had a uh play around with different. You know, it's pretty much almost identical as far as the cabinets and stuff like that, which is nice to keep all the staff on the same, especially with, you know. Two ambulances and a backup, when you run into it, it's nice to have the same type of compartments and the equipment in the same areas or. You know, especially speed and accessibility wise.
Um no, that that's really great. I think it looks great. I wish it was, right?
We did have enough cans.
You beat me to it. Beat me to it.
Sorry, sir.
Beat me to it. All right. All right, I don't have anything more because he just. Chris, do you have any questions?
You have you?
Yeah.
Mike, can you unlet me, Chris?
I'm gonna, while you're waiting, Chris, I'm just gonna ask a quick question and we'll hopefully jump in. Um Chief, thank you for the explanation about the squad truck. You have in our packet a little, like a picture of the newest squad truck, right? So this is what, we're gonna get something like this, that's within the capital plan?
I'm in favor of that tonight.
That that's what, but that's what the proposal is in the capital plan. Okay.
The same one.
The same exact one. Okay, cool. Chris is ready. Go ahead, Chris.
Uh thanks for coming in, Chief. I just have one quick question. Uh I think the explorer program is fantastic because it's a good pipeline for you all to get uh people into the department, especially when it's hard. I think for a lot of different departments and organizations to get volunteers. Um I think you said you were one individual short to be able to run the program. Has has it been opened up to like neighboring towns or anything like that, just to try to get interest from a little bit of a broader section?
So I'll be honest with you, it's one of my big pet peeves have always been that I don't um, I don't steal members from other the towns. Meaning that we've always had people apply and I'm like, well, why are you leaving Coventry or why are you leaving? Went like, what? Like, like, you you know, I never tried to steal different people from different towns. The explorer program sometimes had them before. I think Ellington Vernon had a comment, I think Vernon did a combination police fire or police post or something. Otherwise, Ellington, I think ran something similar, so um we did just reopen that up to the surrounding towns. I believe it was just two weeks ago because I know sometimes Wellington might not have the staffing or the people or the different things. Cause I know sometimes Wellington people play in the different sports and different uh programs up here as well. So we did, we did open it up. Um I think we put just a mileage requirement. So somebody from way out in Chaplain or something else was in, you know, putting in because of the time it's. So we're gonna watch the the age and the school nights and the different types of stuff. So we did put a mileage requirement on it, um but we maintained the mileage requirement, the same as what the volunteer um. Fire and E M T applications are, so everything's standardized, consistent, so no one can come back to try to challenge anything.
Great, thank you.
All right, and I just have one more question about this. There are two items in the year one capital budget, uh two big pieces of equipment. The first is the uh squad truck, so thank you for that information. The second is refurbishing tank four forty.
Correct.
Can you just give us a really quick overview of why we need to do this?
So basically what we did was when I was, when I first pretty much came on uh and took over, we had a nineteen seventy three tanker. We were fortunate enough in the town that um dealing with the vendor, we were able to place two tankers in the town. For almost the price of one because we bought two Kenworth chassis. The reason I went to Kenworth chassis, they're gonna be fifty year truck, sixty year. I mean, you know, didn't I mean broken it? Didn't I, that's a, that's an over the road uh major uh, you know, apparatus wise. Um so we were able to buy two of them um at a discounted rate, buying two at once. And then we went with U S tanker and put the the bodies on it and we didn't put the full cap, like we saved a lot of money. So right now those are almost twenty fourteen, they're going up on almost twenty four years old. Tank one forty was in last year's and the bid specs just came back um because we we sent it out for a reverb big spec. And the bid specs just came back, um and I didn't even open the envelope up, but there was only one, only one vendor that bitted on it. Um which was great, it was the original uh vendor that built the truck, but we sent it out to five uh various refurbished places. So the reasoning for that is you're carrying, you're carrying, you're carrying over three thousand gallons of water. Uh the salt, the corrosion, the wear factors in the tank and then obviously uh corrosion inside the pumps, corrosion inside everything else. Um so that whole tank will be taken off, frame all redone, cleaned up, all new springs, all new undercarriage stuff. And then um the tank and inside the pump will all be rehashed and relooked at um with all new stuff. And then if we, if there's extra money, we'll go with the new electronics and, you know, the diodes as far as the shoots where the water comes out and that type of stuff. So that'll last you another twenty minutes. So.
Important in town that we have the tankers dispersed throughout town because we don't like, I previously came, but we don't have very many fire hydrants. In town, the vast majority of our town is distal to those hydrants and we gotta bring the water to the fight. So it's, and and as John was saying, he says springs, he means it's in three thousand gallons of water. Those trucks are sitting right now loaded up with that much weight on them and the spring told them year after year after year. And so uh we gotta flip them upside down every once in a while and change the stuff and get it back on the road. We gotta bring more to the fight down.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I think that will be helpful as we go into our more in-depth capital discussion. I don't have any more questions. Does anyone else have more questions for the chief?
Yeah.
I do.
Awesome.
I want to be down, John.
Started by prayers of volunteer nineteen ninety. So that's it. Uh maybe three years, something, you know, they're going on thirty, going on thirty four.
There's no words I can give today to describe what John does uh after hours and not, nothing to do with his work here. Um above and beyond doesn't adequately describe volunteer stuff that he does, the things he does um for families and. Um he doesn't ask for any recognition. In fact, he probably wants me to take my phone and throw it in Willimantic River because. I'm trying to get him out there and for people to understand uh what he does, so uh thank you, John. I just wanna thank you for all that. And there's not too many people in town that. Uh, thank you, John. Just wanna thank you for all that and there's not too many people in town that he hasn't held the hand of a family member at a horrible time, so, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Alright, the next item on our agenda is eight point three. Which is uh the consideration of a resolution for various ARPA subcommittee funding use recommendations.
Okay, so in the uh on our ARPA subcommittee, as you know, we we've over everything uh in subcommittee and then make recommendations to council as we. I think of the the recommendations that we're looking to spend that on should be advanced, but that comes to council's final decision. Today, we're presenting uh the pub, uh public works uh generators at the highway garage and parks garage for the install. Uh, up to forty thousand dollars and Director Lafferty will talk about the install and the vendor. And then also the purchase of a new vent track uh tractor. Um, up to fifty thousand and those who went on the tour saw that it was being held together with duct tape and. As Scott and I were walking through the parking lot during the storm, we saw oil. Um, that the vent track had uh left behind as well, so um I have uh Scott or, I'm sorry, the chair. Uh, of our ARPA subcommission, uh Colleen, if you want to talk about anything.
Uh, no, you did a great job, Brian. It's pretty, I mean. We self-explanatory, I think, and um Brian is absolutely right what the vent track turned out to look like. The ones that were there, I think most of us were there, so. Um, any financial questions? I would um ask Lisa those.
Jacob, do you have anything before we? As we start to open the discussion? Questions?
No, I think they converted pretty well. And I'll just add in my two cents, because I saw the vent track tractor definitely gets a lot of use and um. It's already in the capital plan, so it's not like we're talking about like the greater where it's renting to buy or anything like that. We already have one, so it's a matter of simply using funds to replace existing.
Any questions about the using ARPA funds for these two items? Okay, I have a question. Um, do we need, we just did a bid waiver for another purchase, do we need a bid waiver for either of these two? Should we be talking about a bid waiver at the same time?
Uh. The services, I believe, is all we're doing with the the generator, right? The services?
It's um. In the current fiscal year, what's the purchase of one brand new one for the highway garage? And reusing the one from Birch Road that's um.
Correct.
Parks Garage. Yeah, what happened was just as everything pricing came in higher than what. And that's why we did ship uh forty thousand dollars that'll offset that change.
And the vendor?
The vendor is um Higgins Hall, they put in numerous generators for us, no. Um, they didn't want Waldville, they didn't want the senior center. Yeah, they do all of our service, so they are preferred vendor. Um. So looking at professional service, so we don't really, don't have to go out to bid.
And then in the vent track, um we don't need to go out to bid because we'll jump off, we'll piggyback on the state or a consortium uh bid, should they have one.
Awesome, that's good to know. So we essentially are going out to bid on that.
Someone already went out to bid.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good. It's good to know we're we're doing that. Uh, that was my only question. Any, Chris, did you have any questions on this?
Nope, thank you.
Yeah. So with no more questions, is there a motion to approve the resolution on eight point four?
So much.
Oh, so Chris made the the motion, Jacob seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion before we go? Yeah, okay, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Uh, Chris?
Yes.
Colleen?
Um. Joe?
Hi.
Alex?
I am.
I, I'm also an I, so that is unanimous. Thank you. Next is eight point four, consideration of a resolution to rescind the four hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funding for the town green ADA sidewalks. And veterans area improvements and include that in the fiscal year twenty-three point, I'm sorry, twenty-four, twenty-five. Capital improvements budget as recommended by the ARPA subcommittee.
Yes, uh so as you're all aware, that the uh the ADA sidewalk on the green. Uh, was approved through council, uh it had since been moved to litigation. Um, by the historic society, the red and white, and I believe the French Canadian uh society as well, and it currently sits. Uh, in litigation at some cost uh to the town and town attorney. Um, and pending work for staff in regards to interrogatories and depositions uh that that lie ahead. Litigation process, as it moves towards adjudication, obviously is gonna take some time. ARPA, the sand in the hourglass is running uh down to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, so if we kept the um sidewalks in ARPA and the litigation had not been adjudicated by that date. Uh, then we'd be struggling to pay for it, so in a responsible effort to ensure that the sidewalks have funding. Uh, following adjudication, should uh it move forward, we want to have that uh funding in place. Uh, with me to discuss it is my financial director, our financial director. Um, to discuss any possibilities or questions. Uh, we wanna move it out of ARPA into the capital plan. Um, and so that's what we stand.
Absolutely, Kelly. So. Personally, I was on the ARPA committee last two years as well. This one was really hard to. Pull out the ARPA funds, I mean, it's such a good use for people, not just handicapped, but moms, older people, et cetera, and. There's the situation we're in, it just, it's hard, but it's the right decision to do, as Brian mentioned, we don't want to lose that funding. Our state's gonna be going back into ARPA if we want to, of course, we don't have to, if we don't want to tonight, um. And it's just um that money will be returned back and we'll use it somewhere else within um the capital budget. I know Lisa right now is um playing around with some other ideas that Jacob and I asked um Brian and Lisa. So.
Yeah, this is the formality of actually moving it just off of the.
Yeah. Which I don't really think we have done. That, yeah. Um, I think. He, and obviously we do want it back in the capital, that we want this item in the capital, and I think Katie, um you mentioned you had some specific questions um for Lisa.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and this isn't about not doing sidewalks, it's more of a procedural thing to actually enable us to do the sidewalks. We have to do it to be in line with the with the law, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions about this? Chris, go ahead.
Uh, just a quick statement to piggyback off of what Jacob said, um I think it's really important that we ultimately do the sidewalks, hopefully. You know, once litigation's over, we'll be able to do that, um I, but I also agree with the ARPA subcommittee that we don't want to lose the money, so it's important to take it out. But I definitely don't want it to be seen as, you know, not supporting the sidewalk situation, because I think uh certainly I support, continue to support uh putting a sidewalk.
Thank you. Um, so I have some. Procedural questions, I I guess is how I put it. Um. If we remove this funding from ARPA and. The motion that we have in front of us is to add it to the capital plan, um would it be in the year one capital plan?
Year two, year one was uh, you know. A goal.
Yeah.
You know, when the first, when litigation first reared its head. Um, but now it's looking more the, the much safer move and much more prudent move is for the town is to do it in year two.
And year two is just a, is twenty-five, twenty-six.
Correct.
So it ends June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, okay? Um, and when, so kind of logistically. We're gonna have a public hearing about our capital plan uh in a month or so. We're not, we don't vote on the capital plan, then we vote on it as part of our budget, but um when we have discussions. We consider it as part of non-referendum bonding in year two. Is that where we should consider it, or would that be further addressed down the road as we do a new capital budget in a, in a year?
Um, there there's a variety of areas that we could recommend funding, um and it's all gonna depend on. How things move forward with other ARPA projects.
Okay.
In year, what we will do is, it it's very common during the budget process that you presented a capital plan in December. And then as the manager starts going through his budget, there's times that he will change that capital budget. And so the presentation in February will have. Those recommended changes and he will outline it. Um, so. With that said, right now, it appears that the funding recommendation will probably be non-referendum bonding.
Okay.
And in year one. We, unless we move some projects around, we won't really be able to put it as non-referendum bonding in year one.
Okay.
Um, so my recommendation is year two, there's enough room to accommodate it, but now things change. Depending on what other decisions you make. Um, there's a possibility to put it in year one, and that does not mean that the project has to be completed in year one.
Yeah.
It, you know, that's when your funding is in place. You usually have three years of investment. To be able to complete the project within three years.
Yep.
Um, so, so that's pretty much how it would be handled.
Okay. Thank you. That's um, that's very informative. I really appreciate you kind of laying that out for us. Do you have a question?
Yeah.
I don't know if you could answer this, Brian, um or whoever could answer a question, just just so we're still kind of moving the ball forward. And that's stalling out here with this and uh trying to get some action plan in place while we're waiting a year. Or more. Um, there was rumors that, you know, this would be, if this was done, there might be a landing area added to Red and White. The path may have benches, the path may be sarcotus, it may be straight. Um, are these things that we can work toward as a community here or? Get input from the community on, or is, or because of litigation or we have installment with, with any kind of planning?
The, the latter part of your question, yes. Uh, what was submitted was the plan submitted to us by the historic uh district commission. Um, the benches. Only benches that were even discussed remotely were as part of the veterans, uh the the um handicap veterans access area. And as of right now, there's no way for, um, there's no ADA for a handicap veteran to get to the, from the monument that's there. Um, that that would be the only benches and that was discussed, that will be discussed with the historic district commission uh between, with the veterans commission, the town's gonna almost take no role in that. I'll let those two work it out and we'll figure it out from there. As far as the town, uh putting benches down or anything like that, no. And as far as when white, I haven't, and I never even heard that before, so no. But uh the historic district commission sent us a plan. Uh, you can certainly reach out to them and ask them for it, or I can uh provide it for you as well, but that was the plan they submitted for the sidewalks and then. Um, reneged on it and and now where we are. We are legally, uh, we are bound to seek their advice uh for sidewalks, and that's what we did.
Thank you. I could, uh, something I can certainly bring up, because I, we we have yet to have a, a meeting for uh the veterans commission.
Say that again.
Uh, we we have yet to have a, a meeting for the veterans commission.
They submitted some stuff, kind of rough.
Okay.
Kind of, maybe drawing of um, not a mechanical drawing, but a drawing of what their inv, their vision is out there, and it's very respectful, nice.
Yeah.
Veterans area for um many veterans and committed.
Well, we haven't had a formal meeting yet, but being elected to that commission, if anybody has questions, I can come back with something that's a little clearer than we have. Um, for ideas.
Thank you.
I think they're meeting on the eighteenth.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about this agenda? Okay, is there a motion then to approve the resolution for item eight point four?
Absolutely.
Second.
So moved by Jacob, seconded by Alex. Alright, any, yeah, go ahead.
Conferencing discussion. Yes, so. Wait, what's, I'm sorry, I didn't actually refer the wrong motion, Katie. So. It says the year, do we want to include twenty-four, twenty-five? Is that? When it, I think you wanted.
Amendment.
Uh, it's gonna be in the second year.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-six, or does it?
Well, the, it's a capital budget is the twenty-four, twenty-five capital budget, so you could say twenty-four through twenty-eight.
Okay.
This year's capital budget, but it says what it is in the budget.
Right, that's what I mean.
Okay.
So.
So this.
I was unclear, yeah.
Yeah, so um we can, we can taste this, the way the resolution is drafted to mean. That it's in the capital improvements budget that will be considered this year. Um, and that budget includes five years' worth of planning.
Right, well said.
Okay. Does that make sense? Is that clear?
Yeah, as long as it's been there, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote then. Chris?
I.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, hold on one second.
I'm sorry. The motion is stands.
The motion stands as drafted.
Thank you.
Um, and you know, we just clarified that the budget, the capital budget that's referred there is the one that will be considered by this council. Um, and is a five-year plan. Okay, Chris, we'll start again.
Go I.
Okay, Colleen?
I.
Jacob?
I.
Joe?
Hi.
Alex?
Hi.
Hi.
It's I, I'm an I, so that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, the next item on our agenda is uh review the drafted town council goals and discuss and consider two additional goals that are in our packets.
So I'll start.
Yes, sure.
Um, so each town council has a set of goals. Uh, together, we work as a team to achieve said goals uh and bring in whoever we need, uh, the, our town staff and departments to again facilitate. The goals. I had twice a year, I believe, I I uh revisit said goals with council and develop uh or discuss progress that we've made. Um, we've been successful, I believe, in the um last uh set of goals and. Looking at these, I, I'm happy with them and it really is your opinion that matters though, so I'm on just to discuss anything. Um, if our town planner brought something to me to bring to you. We can discuss that as well.
Sure. Thank you. So um, the drafted uh goals that are in our packet. Um, it is, as well as the vision statement and mission statement, uh, I'm on page thirteen. Those of you who are following along, um, these, this is what, this is the um. What we discussed at our special meeting uh in December. And number five and number six are new, so those weren't discussed. Um, before we get to five and six. Is there any comment, feedback, requested changes to uh the. Uh, the modified vision statement and mission statement that's in our packet? Yeah, please, Jacob, go ahead.
Couple of quick ones, so.
Can we start with just the vision and mission statement and then we'll go through?
Oh, I'm good with the vision and mission statement.
Yeah.
Specifically.
Yeah, okay. So if we don't, you can, if anything comes back up, please bring it back up. So let's just go through number one, is, do you have any, anything with ball number one or A through J under that? Any questions there? Yeah, go ahead.
So for, for one A.
Yeah.
I guess I'm not entirely comfortable with. Creating a new strategic plan. I I totally respect the, you know, the, those who might disagree with that. I guess I prefer to resort to a little bit more like explore the possibility, like explore um. Explore the idea of creating this new plan or something, uh-huh, because I didn't. Yeah, that, that kind of just revised a little bit more.
Sure, this is on the, this is on what?
This is on page fourteen of the packet.
The one A, it's right now, the drafted version says support town manager and various stakeholders in creating a new strategic plan. And Jacob is asking for that to be changed to, instead of saying. So support town manager and various stakeholders in exploring the idea of a strategic plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, other than that, I'm responding with the other one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other, I'm, I'm okay with that too. I don't know, is there general?
Agreed.
Okay, with that, okay. Anything else on goal number one, which has A through J, cap, uh, sub? Alright. We're not closing it, so don't feel like. We can't come back, but uh let's move on to number two and see if there are any. Changes uh to. Changes, uh, to. Number two. A through S, a little bit shorter. This is regarding infrastructure. Does anybody have any? Comments, questions? We're good with two?
Also two.
All right. Number three is about recreational opportunities. This one is our shortest one, only A through C. I know, that's okay.
Dr. Golds.
They get, they get a score. I get it.
Thanks to the tree that came down. I figured it was gonna excuse.
Yeah, we're good. Thank you so much. Thanks, Jacob. Um, so we'll go to number four again. We're not closing anything, but, uh, number four has A through H. Any questions, concerns?
For H. I'm just wondering if we could. Work in the word unity in there somewhere, like a unified community or something. I think that's just kind of. I know one thing's Brian, as mentioned, and I support is this idea of trying to bring the town together. I know the past few years, if that's. Device of this, I love to see the council work that in a bit.
Is that? Would that be separate from G with the inclusivity?
In the H.
Yeah, no.
And G as well, um. Or inclusivity or unity, um. I don't know, I, I, I just like the idea of having that in there. I kind of fixed to how we got there to as a council so far.
I agree with that.
Did you, did you want to say something, Chris?
No, no, I agree with Jacob.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hi Lisa. Thanks Lisa. So. Do you have a preference, Jacob, between G adding unity to G or H?
I bet you could probably. Might go better in G if you could just say to support unity and inclusivity. It's a sign right there. Other than that, that's a good.
Alright. Anybody else? Okay, um. So.
Hope.
Yeah.
Obviously, this, this kind of looked back to where I was last week. I gave, you know, fifty thousand dollars for this task force, but. The, the mental health task force, I don't know. Running that we had a, a, a good break and a good holiday and we kind of were just talking about, um. Number four. Uh, bullet E. For our. I'm sorry.
Yes. Yeah, I'm there.
Yeah. Last council, we said that we might have a report for you for the mental health task force. That committee last, last time seemed like we had only put that in motion.
Safe to leave on there because, in my humble opinion, uh, we want to move forward with. We got some money. From the feds in relation to the opioid settlement. Uh, we want to spend that money based on the recommendations from the mental health task force. So, um, we're not extending the mental health task force. We're just gonna make sure that we use those recommendations. Um, as we spend the, the opioid settlement money. That, those recommendations were on a. Addiction prevention specialist, uh, here in town. We wouldn't hire that person as a town employee. We would subcontract it. Through HVCC. How can it valley, Nicky? Yeah. Uh, we use for other types of social services. They're fantastic. Um, and that's, it was actually my town manager report, so that, that's something we're moving forward on with, uh, Bev and her new assistant. We were waiting to really push forward for the assistant human services director to come on. She started this week. And so now we're really gonna push and so I can scratch that on my topic. Thoughts, I mean, I, that's gonna happen anyway. So it's, but it's a good goal for you to have in there and I can give you an update every. Six months, yes.
Swift point of clarification for Alex, so.
Yeah, I think.
Um, mental, I think you said to can, to help the mental health task force continue. The mental health task force has been dissolved.
Yes, I see.
I think I was talking about that before.
I would see.
That it was in, that was that you had calling?
Yeah, with her.
Didn't that come, can you send that out, Sarah, about the US sent, yeah, December twentieth, thank you. So it should be in your email from December twenty.
The big takeaway, want to ruin the surprise ending. We should have a prevention specialist in town.
Thank you.
It was a footnote search.
Yes.
That is the footnote search, yes.
Sarah read it, thank you.
So does that answer your question?
Sure.
Okay, just want to make sure.
I'm just glad that's kind of in motion.
Yeah, yeah, yep, absolutely. Yeah. Any other questions about? Four or one through four? Before we get to new ones.
Uh, I'm good.
No, I'm sorry. If you don't mind, Brian, I'm gonna jump five and talk about six, cause. Uh, we'll give you a second. Uh, number six was something I sent in as a request. Uh, for us to add, I, I, I'm actually hoping we could add it to. Goal number, as a sub-bullet to goal number one, um, and that is to review the ordinance sixty. Uh, policy change, the recent policy change, um, and to increase communications to invite eligible residents to participate in the program. Um, the town manager staff was wonderful enough to include ordinance sixty in our packet. Which is, uh. It, we had some great presentations to, uh, make it. A little bit easier to read, cause sometimes reading policy is a little bit hard, just like that, but ordinance sixty is a program for. Residents over sixty-five and those who have disabilities, uh, to give them a property tax break. Um, and the idea was to streamline and make it easier for residents to participate in the program.
Why, why I was just wondering, did we skip all of five?
Yes.
Yeah.
I skipped five, I was like. Wow. I said, I, I said I was gonna, I said I was just gonna leapfrog five, we'll go. So my hope is that we can, uh, review the change. That we made, that was made on the last council and try to increase communications so more residents who are eligible for the program would participate.
So I actually wanted to leave back, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Four, B, if, if you're done with.
Yeah, does anybody else have any questions about ordinance sixty? First, yeah, go ahead, Jacob.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the numbers here, ensuring I understand it right. So. Same percent underserved, twenty-five percent, so implying there's, you're only capturing like. Twenty-five percent of people who we believe are eligible, is that correct?
That's all stuff we review every six months. Should you, should you keep that as a goal? Every six months, I'm gonna come to you and say.
Yeah.
Um, this is how much the, um, program is costing, cause it's a cost.
Yeah.
Uh, this is how much the, the program is costing. This is how many people are using it. Um, this is what they're saving, um, and this is the potential of other taxpayers. And here's how we're trying to do increased community outreach to them. One of them, I believe, I. We wanted to put it in the, didn't we, on the tax bill when it went out?
Yeah.
And I don't know what on this one, but we'll get it out on the next one when the tax bill goes out. To the old timers, to be there, if people don't hear it, it's gonna be right there for them. Hey, here you go.
We used to have like the recycle schedule on there and, you know, just points of information, but if we can have something more beneficial. Then unlike ordinance sixty, it makes more sense. Unfortunately. We missed the cutoff for the printing of that in the last go around, so it would have to be next year.
Yep. And, uh, Jacob, I don't remember how to answer your question. I'd have to go back and look it up. But we were considering the items that are covered on page twenty-one, uh, the benefit scenarios. We were considering. Having a different starting amount for year one, so that's comparison, comparing. Uh, the year one benefit to be three hundred dollars and then one hundred dollars every year thereafter versus. Two hundred and fifty dollars start and a hundred dollars every year thereafter. Um, from there, I can't remember what that underserved thing means, so we have to go back to the financial advisor. We'd have to talk to Bob or, uh, Jason about that.
Some history, it, it had been around for a while, underutilized, difficult to understand, I think it was inscribable, uh, to some degree for me. Uh, and, uh, we, Bob would be all. Said, there's a big league here in town and still helps out with some different commissions. But this was one of his projects a decade or so ago and. Came back. Offered, uh, to fix it. Part of the last couple of goals were to update it and get more people involved in it. Um, look at different ways to flex or tighten the, uh, the benefit. And as she's saying, the first year, you know, and, and how much they save right away and, and moving forward from there. Uh, and it's, it was successful. But certainly, um. Deserving of periodic review. As, as you know, and so we just recently did a major tweak to it, so it couldn't hurt six months, one year, one point five. Yes, to, to see, you know, is, is it, is it really doing what it's supposed to do? Is it costing us an arm and a leg? You know, that's.
Okay, that makes sense. I'm fine adding it's under, under one, one, one K, I don't know.
K for Katie, awesome.
Yeah.
Great. Okay. So that, any other questions about ordinance sixty? Then we'll go back to Alex.
Yeah, I remember, I thought part of it, cause this was a big Sammy thing. He has a big advocate for the sixty changes. But it was made so more people could utilize it and I thought there's gonna be, right, like I thought that was part of it, cause his whole thing, he wanted more people. And it wasn't, it was gonna be easier.
It's easier to apply for. They don't need. Break out their safe and all their documents.
There, there's still some document requirements because there is, uh, an income requirement. Um, for, as well as an age requirement. Um, but I, I do think we asked to see the application, to streamline the application a little bit.
Easier.
And certainly it's much easier to understand what the benefit is going to be, so that when people call and say, Annie, help. Um, it's much easier for Jason or anyone in the tax office to explain exactly how much help this would give them. Prior to this, it was really complicated.
Right, it really was. We couldn't do as much as Sammy wanted because the.
Yes.
So he wanted. A lot, which is kind, but not possible part of it.
Well, and I think it's.
Sam Del Cino you're talking about?
No, Sammy Khan.
Oh, that was a previous.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, yeah, very immediately.
Yeah.
Was, pushed us to pretty much again.
All right, so we're, any, are we in agreement then? We can add this as one K? Awesome, okay. Thank you for being so patient, Alex, go ahead.
Um, so this was kind of something I brought up last, uh, meeting as well for, for B. Support tourism efforts to attract people to town, encourage residents to utilize existing activities within town. Um, Brian, if you remember, this is my vocabulary word therefore that you're so impressed with, but, um, this is something I hope grows legs for me. Um, this is, is something I can kind of report back to you guys that I can utilize. Jason Newton, who has a very, uh. Impressive resume, is a historian, also he has lineage to Thomas Hooker, which I think is very interesting. Um, but pertaining to be trying, uh, my idea is to try to get. Hikers involved, and this is something that I just recently talked to Jacob, uh, to about, you know, hikers involved. Um, people that are interested in the history of town. Um, and I know Jason's very fervent about this topic, but getting the old Connecticut path. To be utilized, uh, maybe some kind of, um. Donations toward the old Connecticut path, uh, to have benches on, um. It's, in its areas, um. You know, Connecticut path comes a long way from where I mentioned in Ny Oldman. Um, and Jason details that. Very authentically in his videos, um, comes right to the center of town. Also, we have. Um, a lot of ads tour here. We have rumors of underground railroads and portions of houses that may or might, may or may not have false chimneys in town. Just interesting things of, of history in town and then, um, trying to get that homestead to. Have some kind of revitalization after seemingly being dulled down during COVID, so. Um, I'm gonna reach out to Jason and see if getting a group activity for the town engagement for that specifically. Maybe toward the spring.
Got it, that sounds good.
Anything, anything else? Okay, so Brian. Now we can, can you go over five for us and what the, where this came from?
Yes, um, it was at a recent, um, development meeting, development meeting is something we have once every, uh, two weeks. And it's a, um, meeting with. Our engineers, our, um, town planner, our, our building inspector, DPW, fire marshal. And our grants manager and myself. Um, and we discuss any sort of development issues in town. Uh, in, in our most recent meeting, uh, or last, I think the last meeting, um, our town planner. Brought up a desire to create some sort of working database of all the town properties in town, which I was somewhat surprised to find out we didn't already have. Um, that to, that is to include little square pieces of land that we have out there in town. Uh, to actual, uh, structures and buildings and such, everything that we have. Working database to, uh, you know. That talks about where it is. Uh, when we had it, how long we've had it, you know, the, the cost essentially what it's worth and work through it. We, you know, there's believed we have a lot of, uh, places in town, land in town that we could probably, uh, sell. Uh, and get it into our tax rolls. Uh, at the same time, we are in the process of purchasing. Uh, some land or looking at purchasing through land acquisition. He would like to create a database and then have some periodic review, uh, to include, um. The stakeholders, which would be, um, land acquisition, uh, conservation and, um. Zoning, economic development, uh, his office, and obviously, uh, we report back to council. Once every, uh, s- six months. This, this has never. It's always been looked at haphazardly when something rears its head. Um, Dave brought this to me under the, um, Dave Corbett, who's our planner, he'll be in front of us at some point. He brought it to me under the standing, this is gonna be work for him. Um, and when he said it, I said, this is gonna be, you know, you're putting that list together. He was, uh, he knew that and said, yep, and, and happy to do it and, um. Just as long as it's being reviewed, uh, he wants to just make sure it's been maintained. It's just. Somewhat been ignored, shelved, or no one's paying attention, um, and we wanted to shine some light on.
Thank you. Chris, did you want to add anything here? I know it was a topic of discussion last night, right?
Yeah, I just, I support, uh, having the goal for sure. I. Similar to Brian was surprised we didn't already have such a list of the town-owned property. I mean, it's something that planning and zoning, um. You know, thinks is important as well, so I think this is a good thing for the town and it's a good way. Uh, for the town council and planning and zoning to sort of, um, collaborate a little bit and, uh, get this accomplished, so, um. I totally support the goal.
Thank you. Go ahead, Brian, yeah.
I forgot to mention, should we decide to purchase property? There is an elaborate process that goes through council to purchase property. Should we decide to sell property? There is an elaborate process that goes through council, uh, to, um, sell. So it's not anything we'd be doing in, in on our own. Uh, it's a very open process and, and heavy lift, I believe, every time we do do it, so it's not something we do a lot, but. There's like, I, I am looking at a map and seeing a piece of land that's completely surrounded by houses. That we don't, it's not a big piece of land. Why not sell it to one of the neighbors? You know, and, and so it's stuff like that that's just being overlooked. It's funding up to there, um, so let's look at them.
Does anybody have any questions for Brian on this? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just wondering, would it make sense maybe to add like a little sub-goal here, maybe? Explore ways that, which that revenue could be used, um.
Is it defined? At least a laptop. I believe when we sell land, it's defined, right?
Oh, there's, there's already rules in place for that.
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Part of our AAA bond ready, which how strong our, our fund policies are, uh, that's our thing. I'll look into that, Jacob.
Okay.
I'm speaking from memory, but the last time I read through all the funds, it's gotta be by a year or so now, but I'll find out for sure.
Okay.
Katie, can, for coming, can you remember?
I believe that there is a fund for land acquisition and sold land. That, that sounds right to me.
We're not gonna get my water slide with selling some land.
There is a land acquisition.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It is pretty prescribed, but, um. That doesn't mean we couldn't consider a policy to change that too.
Yeah, I was just kind of wondering, you know, depending on how big of an opportunity that is, maybe that's something we want to look at, revise.
Yeah, well, we won't know until we know.
Yeah, I think in three steps down.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Like the ball, for sure.
Do, do you think that, um, this could also be added to? One, I'm just thinking that, uh. one through four were clearly defined in the missions statement.
I don't mind if she horny or whatever you want, Katie, it's just a matter of writing it up and, you know.
Yeah.
My word, framing up my word document.
Yeah, I think, does anybody object to being put into one? Okay, so I think this is, I think it's great. I don't know. Does anybody else have any feedback on this?
I think it's a good idea too. Nice, nice goal for sure.
Go David.
Go David.
Yeah.
That was great.
Yeah.
So funny, this is all you.
Awesome. So um I I apologize, I don't know if we have. Do we want to uh see the final version of the goals before we vote on them? Or would we like to vote on them as we discussed tonight? What what's everyone's level of comfort here? Voting on it tonight?
As long as these amendments were written.
Yeah, yeah.
There's got them. Lisa's got them.
Awesome. All right, so then is there a motion to accept the town council uh missions, vision statement, mission statement and goals as they are in our packet with modifications we made tonight?
I am gonna, I, I, we totally, at least that maybe I was yawning or something, but I totally missed the the vision when we talked about
Yes.
Vision statement. Um, so and and I know this was like in the original, I don't know how I missed it, though. I didn't question it, but um I'm gonna, I'm gonna. On the vision statement, the very, the very last one, we're talking about expanding um development of a town budget process that expands community involvement and a progressive education system that meets your state's standards. So um I'm questioning the word progressive education system because I think that word is open to too many interpretations as to what exactly that that means. I think we, we wanna keep it more simple, right? And just say something like, and um involve and support an educational system that meets your standards. Because it's not really our role to determine, it's more of Ed's role to determine what kind of an education system we have. It's not the town council's role to determine what kind of an education system. So I would strike that word and just put something more standard like uh involvement, you know, or support, support an educational system that exceeds uh state standards. Because really, we're here to support the board of that.
The board's determination.
I don't, was that the verbiage that you had used, Jacob, since you were the one that brought that one that we?
Well, that we talked about, yeah.
I don't remember you.
I think it was, I think it was like, I think it's been there and I just totally.
I meant to bring that up in the previous meeting as well. Um, yeah, I can't remember exactly, exactly what I had said, but I I think the way Joe would phrase it is be good. Would be good. I I just think, you know, like Joe said, that word can be, um, it's open to misinterpretation, um, depending on.
We had misinterpretation with the word that was there before.
Oh, that's common.
Yeah. We're kind of going back down that path of progressive. I agree with Joe.
But um, yeah, I'd be fine just striking that, uh, like it, and an educational system that meets or exceeds state standards. That sounds like a good education system to me.
I guess I'm kind of confused with what misinterpretation could be with progressive.
Well, it's just a political.
In what way?
By progressive ideology, like affluent politics. It's kind of like the way some people might read into that word. Yeah, um, that was my only concern.
That's why I get into a debate about it, like what it means, just get rid.
Okay. I don't think that was the intent of whoever wrote it.
Yeah.
But I don't think that, you know, I want people coming to our meetings saying, you have this progressive education system, what are you trying to do? You know, I don't think that helps anybody.
Yeah, it's not town councils. It's not town councils' will to determine the type of education system that's part of it. So why, where are we?
Yeah, I think it's more important than that.
For sure.
I would agree on that too. I had questioned Katie when the goals, you know, came out on the word progressive right away. It, it, you know, it just didn't drop the word altogether. Something about when I read it, doesn't read right. And like Joe said, it's not our choice how we do our education system, but that's my unaffiliated comment on that one, so.
What about substituting progressive for strong?
Strong, that's fine.
Strong's great.
That kind of goes with the uh, you know, the standards. Yeah, you know, so we want a strong one that exceeds things. That makes sense.
I would go better, Katie.
Yeah, probably better than you like. I refer. I think the word I went to, they're gonna think strong is a better.
Any? Yeah.
Could we repeat that?
Yeah, substituting the word progressive for the word strong in the vision statement, the last sentence of the vision statement. Okay. Are we good? All right, so do we then have a motion to approve the vision statement, mission statement and goals as laid out in the packet and modified by our discussion tonight?
Yes, so moved.
Jacob made the motion, Alex seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I just wanna, I think he he did a great job and I note taken, I was really, it really was.
Lisa got it too.
Well, Lisa got it too, but when you sent it to us, it was really, uh, really well organized and good. I just want to let you know, I appreciated that. And Lisa, of course, you know, I appreciate this.
Yeah, okay. Um, then we'll do a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Colleen?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Hi, Jen, and I'm also an I, so that is unanimous. Brian, I guess my one ask is, um, can you, once the changes are put together, could you send a cop, final copy out and?
Of course.
You're shaking your head.
No, of course, yeah, you know, we'll also, we'll schedule the six month, for six month, the review of said goals.
It also, um, goes on the website. Do you want me, are you comfortable with me putting it on the website after you take a look at it?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. It should go on our website.
Yeah, it is.
I'll call in, keep track of including in chat.
Yeah. Brian?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, so the um, the next item on our agenda is appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. And there is, uh, as always, a list of vacancies in our packet as well as the reappointment of two people. Is there any discussion about this?
Uh, Katie, I just wanna mention, um, and thank Sarah Beth. Uh, I think historically, reappointments just like automatically came up uh onto the agenda once um Sarah Beth had confirmed with the individual that they wanted to renew their appointment. Uh, and Joe and I had talked going forward. Um, she's just gonna s- send us the names just in advance before it gets on the agenda, just so Joe and I can can take a look at it, mostly just to keep some sort of um parity between appointments and reappointments. So that that'll be happening going forward, but um I don't, I don't anticipate that will take a lot of time, but just so that way there's some continuity between the two processes.
Thank you. I think that makes a lot of sense and I appreciate the.
That was a great point Chris brought up, actually, and it made made perfect sense that we do it that way.
Yeah.
Going forward.
Thank you and thank you for the little bit of extra time that will take. So thank you guys for that.
Just general question about minutes around this item. If there's someone that comes and says like they're, they're interested in the uh commission, but they wanted a little bit more information about serving before they submit their name, like who should I steer them to? Should be committee or?
We have a document that, that, sorry, Jacob, we have a document that brings all that out. Sarah Beth, you gave it to me this morning. Can you just forward that to Jacob in the morning? We'll get that to you.
Okay.
Uh, explains and actually gives you the whole process. The first paragraph is exactly what you're saying.
Okay.
It's pretty simple.
Okay, good.
And it starts with, if you're interested and don't know much about it, you know, here's the meeting, you know, go to the meeting and.
Okay.
So that if someone else were botching tonight and they wanted to know, they could go to the town manager's office? Uh, call the town manager's office?
That's online, right? The the document you gave me today.
Yeah, I don't know. No, that's an internal
Okay.
document, but there is a tab under the town council
Vacancies.
Um, webpage for vacancies that explains that they should email the vacancies dot org.
Chris and I have actually talked to a couple of people that are interested in vacancies and this basically, basically guidance we give to them is to advise them to go to the meeting. Yeah, talk to the chairperson, you know, get an idea of what you're getting involved. And if you're still interested, then reach back out to us and we'll, we'll move forward with getting them. On the, on the.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
And I will do a quick shout out here. Uh, Sarah Beth keeps reminding me, the which one is this, Sarah Beth?
Board of Assessment Appeals.
Board of Assessment Appeals. Uh, means at least two more um members and they could use some alternates too. And the, the Board of Assessment and Appeals needs to meet in March. This is an important part of the revow process. So if anyone is looking for uh a good way to get involved in the town or you know someone who wants to get involved in the town, um, this might be a great opportunity for them to have some exposure, really make a difference, so.
Is that a totally, is that a totally vacant?
There, there's one member right now. Um, it's a, it's a three member committee with two alternates. Um, so there's only one member right now and it's not a heavy lift. They meet twice a year, once in March and once in September. And they hear um personal property appeals and motor vehicle appeals um twice a year. It's usually two evenings um for a total of, you know, five or six hours max.
Do they have guidance about like the rules that they need to sort of follow in making a decision about those appeals?
They do. So, so Jason in the Assessor's Office kind of goes over the state statutes with them and goes over like Kelly Blue Book and, you know, where they derive their numbers from and and, you know, that whole thing. And then you get a packet ahead of time of all the appeals. So you have time on your own to look into them prior to the hearing, if you will. And I use that loosely, but um it's just because it is very informal, but they call the hearing. Um, and if a resident does appeal, they sit before the board and the board hears it and just, you know, deliberates and decides, you know, in favor or not of the appeal. So, but they do get some guidelines through Jason's office.
In case you're wondering, Sarah was a member upset. But when she got hired, she had to surrender. Um, oh, too, too bad.
All right, so we do have then, are there any other questions about um appointments, vacancies? Okay, so we do have two that we could vote on tonight. Um, I wrote down, hold on, I'm just not sure I'm doing it right. Is there a motion? Oh, go ahead.
I was just, I, I thought you were finding names. It was Mary Rose for the Blight Review and Sean for the Epic Question.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. Is there a motion to approve the reappointments listed in eight point six? As Chris just, Chris made the motion?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any questions, comments? No? Okay, we will do a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Colleen? Jacob?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Alex? Uh, Jen has stepped out, so she's not gonna vote and I am also an I, so that is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Um, next we have the reporters have answer. Oh, we have old business first, uh, which there's none. So now you can go, Brian. It's your turn.
First, I want to thank Sarah Beth for her work with the town council goals um and supporting that to get, thank you so much. Um, I'll jump into a storm update while I have everyone here, as you're sure you're getting comfortable with how we approach storms now. Um, uh, according to our DPW director, much different than unfortunately others, for him, I'm sure. Uh, but we, we communicate a lot. Um, this storm was, was uh on everyone's radar. And I say everyone, emergency management, ever source, way ahead of the snowstorm and they were communicating about this much more. They had much greater concerns about this. The snowstorm stuff was very vanilla uh from, from the state, from ever source. This was not, when they get nervous, I get nervous. Um, and so overnight, we're gonna get a ton of rain, two to three inches on top of melting snow on top of wet already ground. Um, forty to sixty mile an hour winds, we're kind of on the, the line between, you know, fifty-ish or so. Uh, we can expect gusts. It'll go to, it'll be bad till about four o'clock in the morning, uh, mostly dissipating by about six. Uh, we have some staff on overnight. That staff will um work to communicate to us um first thing in the morning and by first thing, four or five-ish, um, where we can communicate with all the superintendent, um, make any necessary decisions. Uh, we'll be in contact with ever source. We have a great relationship with ever source here in Talon. Uh, continue to foster that relationship for when things go bad. Um, so, so that's it with the update. You'll, you'll see, you'll hear from me on social media bright and early, uh, unfortunately, I'm sure. Uh, animal control. Um, we, we discussed that somewhat tonight. I met with uh Wellington Town uh First Selectman today. Uh, and we discussed exactly that. They have been shut down by animal control, um, by the, the Department of Agriculture. I believe as of today, um, so uh they're, they're certainly looking to merge and do some regionalization. So we're gonna reopen that door. That's, and that's good to hear. Um, that was a good meeting. We're gonna, we're gonna continue to move forward there. Um, some, you heard John mention new laws came out in relation to animal control. They were, they got to meet today and John today. Uh, we are, I believe in compliance, if there's any necessary changes, it's a lot of stuff like air conditioning and your animal control pen and and such and some different ones. He's gonna have to weed through, you know, his animal control officer weed through and uh let us know if there's anything that um we need to make adjustments on that, but I don't, but I'd certainly love to get into the regionalization. Operation, maybe, Operation Migration Welcome. Now, as a state of Connecticut, um, operation to welcome if there's any mass um influx of um citizens from outside the United States into Connecticut, as you see other cities around the, the country are um dealing with that. We got communication from the state that they have no information that we are gonna start getting um any sort of migration here into Connecticut. That makes me nervous when they say that, but then they have a training on it. So, um, they, they said that we have no information, but you're, you're, we're having this training coming up. Uh, we are gonna have Human Services and Chief Vitell uh intend that training. Um, and then uh let us know what, what the plan is. I do not anticipate that, that um, having a huge negative uh impact on the town of Talon, but I do expect that I, it's when I was with the state, we expected it coming, um, and that's a year and a half ago. So, um, while they say that there's no information, I suspect that there's um some concern that, that, that we're gonna have to start dealing with. So state will be prepared. Should it come to Talon, uh, we'll be prepared as best we can, um, and and see what happens um from there. So that's, that's Operation Migration Welcome from the state of Connecticut. That's, they're having a, a seminar for towns and will be, Talon, Talon, Talon will be well represented uh at. Uh, just to remind, go ahead.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Absolutely.
So what is, what is the advice that the state is giving to the town?
When I let, when I, when they tell us, I'll let you know.
So we're gonna read for it.
We're gonna have a seminar, they're saying, they're saying, we don't have any, very first sentence, we have no information that indicates we're going to get any um, large migration to the state of Connecticut. But we're having training for everyone in the state of Connecticut in case, right? So that makes me nervous. So I made sure that we have staff there um and that we're prepared and that if there's any funding that we can look to get or anything like that, if we do have it, I just wanna be prepared here um to jump on it. And so, um, the, the, the new woman who's in the Assistant Director of Human Services, uh, we put it on her plate. Um, and John as well, it's, it's coming out of emergency management, um, Region Five, so uh they'll be, they'll be there as well, so.
So there's, there's no, there's no, um, so there's no guidance for you. I guess you haven't heard anything yet, but is part of that, here's what to do in the event this happens, this is what we're advising you, or is it that these are the rules that you need to follow per the state, state's new guidelines on immigration?
More likely the, the former as opposed to the latter, but I guess it blended the both.
Okay.
That's just predicting from my little shot, but um they will be, there will be guidance. Absolutely. If this happens, you call and you notify and you should have ready X, Y and Z. And this is what you legally are bound to do and
Okay.
That sort of thing, like predicting. So, okay, uh, moving on. Uh, just a, a gentle reminder, please, if you're gonna, if you're gonna deal with the town staff, please just, at very least, email through me, uh, and include me in, in said emails and it does create some um stress and I'll leave it there. Uh, the, still working with these, this Connecticut State Police on the admin trooper or sergeant or uh the MOU. Uh, it's been radio silence. However, the police coverage in our town has been fantastic and I don't have any complaints with that. Selling of the water company, uh, again, as those of you don't know, we are in the utility business here in the town of Talon, so you can sell. So you can have selling things and that will be a process as well. It'll be a good, a good thing, uh, to, to go through in regards to selling something that the town owns. Um, we now have Megan Masa assisting on that, Beverly, and she's a taskmaster, uh, and really great at, uh, pulling things together and documenting. So happy to have her assisting on that as it moves forward. Uh, the Water Com, the Water Commission itself, uh, which is self-funded, it hired Haller and Sage to assist, uh, with a potential sale. Uh, we have Connecticut Water and Aquion, two companies, uh, looking at Aquion, Aquarian, I'm sorry, jumped on board. Um, and have asked to be included in the potential sales of another potential buyer. So, uh, two buyers are better than one. Uh, as we look to get the, the best deal for the water, uh, company. The bridge project coming to Route seventy-four this summer, uh, the road will be closed completely. Uh, if, if it extends into, it will, it will start to butt into the end of this school year and extend it. If it extends into, uh, next school year and when is anything on time? Sometimes these things, I'll leave it there. If it goes long, uh, which, which is foreseeable, uh, Walt and his staff have been now attending the DOT meetings themselves, uh, with our DPW and, uh, John and such. So we'll be able to deal with the buses if there's any sort of problems there. The farmer's market that exists on Saturdays, I'll work to bring them into ours now that their road is going to be shut down. They probably will not want to, but I will again extend the offer. They're, they're just very, very funny way. So, uh, I knew they give it the best I can in that. You heard, uh, some discussion about the ADA, uh, mat fees that, uh, Jen brought up from the, uh, PCC meetings. That's certainly those, those who don't know, we have a, um, handicapped, temporary, uh, ADA mat that we, we can move around town for different events. Uh, choose mainly on the town green. Uh, that, the mat has a cost, that mat is starting to show wear and tear. And, uh, there is quite an expense in staff to move and set up, uh, said mat. And, and according to Director Lappin, um, for, for DPW directors, two days to put it down. Um, a little less than that to get it up, clean it and store it. Uh, all things that we have to consider. That mat is not going to last forever. It cost around fifteen thousand a few years ago. I'll guarantee the price didn't go down. Uh, and so, you know, at some point we're going to have to replace it. So as a result, uh, we're looking at some different ideas of how to start funding a new mat, say five or, uh, five years down the road. And, uh, one of those considerations is for large events on the green, whichever, um, whoever's throwing the event, charging a fee, uh, if they don't have an ADA plan, uh, to put the mat down. Uh, that would come out of our, our attorney. He would do the language and would run through council and you, you guys would have the final say on all that. Uh, Electric Blue ordinance in regards to the, um, some ordinance that would affect them. That is also still at Rick. We're waiting to, to hear back from him and we'll revisit that when we get that language. I do not have it yet, but I ask regularly. Uh, hopefully we'll have it soon. Uh, maybe the opioid, um, money that we want to spend on the, um, addiction prevention specialist. Uh, public safety consultant, uh, that's going to move to, to, uh, your agendas, uh, in the near future. Where the both, both contractors that have set proposals, well, about what we have provided, are going to come and make their presentations, uh, to council. You just, you guys can pick a consultant and then, um, pare it down or you can get more money or if you see fit to move forward. And then town staff facilitate, make sure the consultant, the, the, the report, uh, the consultant does their report as seamlessly as possible. The town librarian, we're trying, uh, library director, um, we've, we've hired, offered, uh, made, made offers to two people, um, both, applied for the job, got the job and declined it, um, and at the last hour. Um, so it's unfortunate. We, we have some ideas on how to move forward. Um, but when we do, as you asked, when we do hire a director, it'll be all of our, well, my first time hiring a director, uh, but I bring it to council and you have to approve it with the documentation. Um, I'll have Mike, our HR guy, uh, with us and we'll, we can look at resumes and talk about, uh, whatever. When we're ready to move forward with that is, I think I've yet to hire or buy a, a director since I've been, so it'll be your first time for us.
It'll be, it'll be one person brought to us versus a couple?
Typically don't, they don't come unless they want to, um.
Well, I mean, like you're not going to bring?
No, it'll be this, the first. Yep.
Okay.
But it's always nice to pay the pensions enough to come and visit us.
Yeah, yeah, it's nice.
Right. I had a question for you before we get too far, just because I'm always thinking safety, um, with the bridge construction, are we going to have, or do we have an SOP for, uh, the state trooper's office? Being that that road is a main thoroughfare to the schools in the center of town that were shut down and likewise with TFD.
Yes, that was, TFD is all set. They haven't, they have, uh, any, any, and their reroutes planned.
Okay.
Uh, luckily for them, two forty, uh, down here in the center of town, uh, they're, they're up on the highway for the one end. And then, you know, it's, it's almost a fifty fifty split for them either way, uh, which way they go, uh, from this station house here anyway. So it's, it's not that big of a lift. Um, and Plains Road is not too far there anyways. They're all set. As far as, as the troops receiving a main thoroughfare, uh, to Talon on that exact route, that was not presented to the state and, and thought of prior to my arrival here. I brought it to them. The days at the road are closed. They will have an additional state trooper staged on our side as opposed to the, um, troop side, because the troops filled with cops, uh, on our side to, it's not just us, Wellington, um, you know, troops sees main route out there too, um, in that part of the state. So, um, and, and somewhat Stafford as well, uh, depending on where, but it's, that's their route out there. So they'll have a trooper side, uh, on that side on overtime paid for by the state, um, based on our concerns, uh, for that. So.
Yes.
Best we can do. Library media room. We're looking to make some improvements in our library media room, not funded by the town, um, funded by, you know, different library organizations. Um, and naming at the Barbara Penage Media Center. That'll be so we can, they do so much programming in the library. Um, it'll be made virtual, um, to be able to make it virtual. It's, it's problematic now and you know, we have our joint meeting with the board of ed and it's, it's, the owl gets a little problematic down in that room. It doesn't like the sound and it, it's really hurting you jerky. We're looking to make improvements on that in the long run. Again, hopefully at no cost of the town. Elections coming up. I'll be setting up meetings with our registrars and clerks office regularly to make sure the town's prepared and that we have confidence in our registrars. It's something I hold very near and dear to my heart, uh, and so very important, uh, this year. Uh, we can tack on the probate judge. She is hitting the mandatory retirement age by the state. Those who don't know, when you hit seventy as, as a judge, you're forced to retire. They have a very nice package. It's not a bad thing. Uh, however, that is an elected position. The, uh, committees from three different towns, Talon, Wellington and Mansfield, thank you, will, uh, get together and, and throw some nominations out there for a probate judge. Um, that will be tacked on to our presidential election. We just found out last week. It's not a heavy lift. Mr. Lyman, um, for those who don't know, has been doing this, uh, longer than I've been doing anything. So he's, he's going to have no problem with that and be very familiar with it. Um, so it won't just be the presidential. We'll have a, us three towns will have a probate and judge election as well. Uh, I will also be meeting with the, um, heads of the town committees, um, looking at past history. The, the presidential election can be somewhat bumpy. Again, I was hired in this, in town. One of my goals to be, um, the polarization and some of the de-escalation, uh, and de-confliction around, um, politics. We've had some great success here. I'm going to look to continue that through the election, fingers crossed. Um, we can, we can move through that. Uh, but we will be meeting regularly. And if you ever have any questions or you want updates, uh, we can provide them. Trust as the election gets really close, you will be at our council meetings. I will give you, um, just any updates that we have. We have, uh, early voting this year. It was not well-funded. It will affect the registrar's budget, which is pennies to begin with, but it'll be, um, it'll look like a big percentage, but it's, it's not a whole ton of money. But, uh, certainly the state, it was not a well-funded, uh, mandate for, um, early voting. The ice rink is up in the, um, on the softball field that hit social media. I did not want it to hit social media. Uh, it did. Um, the ice rink being up does not mean the ice rink being ready, but we wanted it to be up in the event that we hit a cold spell, say on a weekend or somewhere else. Um, we want to be able to have it there. Uh, it is well surveilled with cameras. Um, but our, my main concern was damage. We have signage ordered for no trespassing and such. It's fenced in, uh, with orange fencing now, so you can't access it. But I wanted, there's one person DPW assigned to it and his mission is to make it ready when we can. The worst thing that we can have happen is we have adequate cold and the rink isn't ready. It's not as simple as some may seem on social media. Um, our rink is somewhat different and the layout's different. And we need several days of not ever going over, um, thirty-two degrees for that rink to be, um, skateable and manageable. Uh, but again, I, I want it to be successful, assign one person to it to maintain and be ready for when that does happen. Again, the worst thing is, say Vernon has their rink up and running and then, you know, they're playing a hockey game over here and we got nothing. So, uh, hopefully we'll have that, but, but it's a good thing to have town and, and a lot of interest in it. Um, are we talking about fire station drive-by? There's a frame there.
I'm going to tomorrow.
Awesome. I had hoped to meet today with the Stafford First Selectman. I did not.
Too, too, Ken.
Uh, he, I wanted, I want to talk about a transfer station there and I haven't told him rest and have the ability to put bulk, um, waste in there. We don't have a, we had a transfer station here, uh, when we were all kids. Um, I'd like that again, but you know, it's going to, there'll be a fee. Uh, maybe there might be some, where a town pays a bump and that people, each resident has to pay a certain fee to go put stuff there as, as anyone else. But, um, something that I'm, I'm exploring, um, the, the new, uh, first selectman there. Talking about the public hearing, uh, for the, the, so in the Wells, uh, on the twenty-fifth, we'll be sure to push that out. The senior center is really moving towards a senior pickleball court, uh, on their grounds over, um, at the senior center. Uh, funded not by the town, but by ARPA and a private donation.
Different ARPA though, right?
Specific senior centers only, um, strings attached. Pickleball, pickleball court would, uh, be adequate daily gardening. They never really worked on TBA. Um, and that, that is with the area they would have it.
But it's not the same ARPA as the subcommittee that?
Right, yeah.
It's with council.
Yeah, I have no problem communicating what we're going to do with the ARPA subcommittee.
No, no, no. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't making, talking about taking money out of.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Katie. So, but those who don't know, the ARPA, this, the Uncle Sam, uh, gave ARPA money specifically for all the senior centers across the United States that said, you spend it as you see fit, but it has to be on a senior, uh, programming or structure and such. Um, Bev and her staff were tasked with coming, becoming up on their own with the best ideas of how to, um, currently spend. So they're getting a lot of requests for that, um, pickleball court, seniors coming in. That's the direction, um, that we're moving in. I know this is a long report, but there's two other things. We're looking to do a well on the Campbell Farms property, um, but we're looking to get that through a grant so we don't have to pay for it. Rent out the Campbell Farms property to a dude now who grows garlic there. Um, he could use some more water. There's pond there and the ponds several hundred yards away. Uh, we, if we can get a free well there, that'd just be fantastic. Uh, I talked about meeting, uh, Wellington. That's it for now. I'm sorry. I ran long.
Does anyone have any questions, Frank?
I have a quick question. Just because it's weighing heavily. I mean, I, I think as New Englanders, we have a pretty good grasp on snow, but it seems every year, keep hoping for normative weather. And it just seems like the past three years and going forward that with having more weather, I know that you're not a climatologist by any means, but I know that we've had more weather closer to Oregon than, than New England here. Um, for the town, uh, for storm drains being inundated by ice on the next day, quite a bit of rain like today. Or a plan for tree clearing. I don't know if that's annual or every five years. Uh, obviously there's bait companies in the area that will clear trees away from power lines. Just, do you have like any updates as far as like what DPW is thinking about these pretty crazy changes in, in weather? And what the town may need going forward? Cause this is.
You'll get quite an update at budget time, um, as we look at, uh, we hire out to a tree service. We have a tree warden. We have some capabilities in emergency to do some tree work, providing there's no power lines around and some, some budget money around tree removal. Then we can discuss that. Um, we do the best we can. Ever Source does a lot of, uh, stuff on their own as well, state on state roads as well too. Um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's an old town with old roads and old trees and thank you. I will kind of hope that last storm shook everything up and shook everything down. I'm sorry, that, uh, is going to come down hopefully. Tomorrow's not too bad, but, um, this is a lot of trees in this town. It's a budget thing.
Yeah.
One more question for Brian? I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
I raised you, I read your town manager's report. Uh, I noticed in the building inspector that he approved a special event permit. Do you know what that permit, what that special event is?
I don't want to ask Sarah Beth because she's going to know and I wanted, I just saw it and I can't remember it.
I'm too old.
Do you remember what it was? I do. It was, who came in?
Right.
It wasn't anything crazy.
Very special.
It was something very normative.
Okay. All right. Um, cool. Um, I did want to, uh, reinforce the, um, the section of your manager's report regarding the Human Services twenty twenty-three Care and Share, uh, the Care and Share Program.
Yep.
Um, where there was a lot of families in town who were supported by other families in town, um, and the Human Services Department. Uh, that program is always a wonderful thing to participate in. And thank you, please, to the staff, um, and also to residents who participate in that program. I also noticed that, um, there's a special call up, thank you, to Ms. Phoebe Green in your town manager's report. Um, Ms. Green is, uh, twelve years old and in lieu of her birthday party, uh, presents, she asked for donations to animal control. Um, and I believe this is multiple years of her doing this. So thank you for calling that out in your, uh, report. I understand there were a lot of, uh, treats and donations that went into animal control for that. So.
Will enter an application when she turns eighteen.
Yeah. Thank you to Ms. Green. Um, uh, I did also just want to say, and I, I think I did send you an email too, when I was at the CCM training this weekend, there were discussions on, um, crogs for us, croc, having, um, funding for animal control efforts. Um, I don't know. I know you had said that it's more about, uh, animal control officers, but just something to keep, um, in mind.
Got it.
All right. Uh, those are my questions. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Um, so we will move on to then item eleven, which is adoption of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting and December ninth, twenty twenty-three, special meeting?
Second.
Okay. Any comments, questions, suggestions? No. Okay. We will do a roll call vote. I don't know. Chris, are you still with us?
Yeah, I am. I just can't turn my camera back on, but aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Jen, I'm also an aye, so that is unanimous. We did the motion in the second, right?
We did all that. Awesome. Yeah. Thank you, guys. Um, Correspondents to Council is next on our agenda.
You know, I believe we had one and I can't find it now. It was about, um, environmental. That's, yeah, I'm pretty sure it's some sort of environmental.
It was a lot.
It does. And I can't, I feel so bad. I went and I went and I couldn't, or do you, right, Katie?
I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, it, it did have to do with environmental, um, ideas.
I think it's about, uh, sorry, I just found it, um, banning uh, use of fossil fuels in our buildings. And new construction. That's a thing. And that, twelve twenty-seven.
Yeah, that's the only one. Um, I've at least seen, I don't know if anybody's gotten any individually, but being sure, like I said, to Katie and others, next few months will be in a lot.
Yes. Yes. Well, okay. Uh, next is item fourteen, which is the Chairperson's Report. Um, I attended the CCM, which is the Connecticut Council of Municipalities, training for newly elected town officials, uh, on Saturday at Rocky Hill. Uh, they did a wonderful job. I, I think there were at least a hundred people from across the state there. Um, they, they did a great job. They, they did a great job, there were three sessions, one on ethics and FOI. A second one on town government structures and a third one on budgeting. The information is going to be posted to their website, so I would encourage you guys to maybe take a look at it, it was incredibly informative. I wanted to do a shout out, thanks again for the Reefs Across America event. It was overwhelming how many people were there, Joe and I were able to speak at that event, it was great. And I hope that type of efforts continue in town. My next chair hour will be a week from tonight, the sixteenth. Of January at six thirty in the library meeting room, I have set dates, thank you to the. Sarah Beth and Anne and the town manager's office, I have set dates for the rest of the year. And I have sent an email to every chairperson of every organ commission in town, inviting them to join me. I already have a few who want to join me in some of these, so I think. It'll be a great opportunity for me to get to know some of these people that I don't know in person and for members of the public to. Come and talk to more than just me when these chair hours happen. And I did want to just remind my fellow council members that the Capitol Budget Public Hearing is coming up, it's Friday, the eighth. Just pristine, uh, February eighth, thank you. Procedurally, we're just going to get a presentation, as Lisa mentioned already, on the Capitol Budget. And I guess there are going to be some minor changes to it. And it's a great opportunity for members of town council to ask questions, we'll open it up to the public for questions. We'll close public key hearing, maybe there's more questions from town council, and that's the end of that. Process, we do not vote on the Capitol Budget that night, that's part of our full town budget, but. Obviously, there's, it's a pretty thick thing, lots of, lots of information in there. So just, I I've been trying to stay on top of getting to a little bit every week, so just keep that in mind. And lots of homework, right, plus we got, yeah, we got more too tonight, so. That's it for me. Next is communications and petitions from council people, is there any? Yes, please call in.
Shana, so first I'm going back because we didn't see each other really in December, I just want to. Thank the Fire Department for their Christmas tours around Talon, which everybody enjoys very much. Didn't realize how much work really goes into that. Tours they do, I just want to especially put a shout out to Glenn, he's the Santa. It does it and especially Assistant Fire Chief Carl Dorgan, I'm going to thank him in public, but. He's actually the one that manages it all, along with a bunch of other people, but. I mean, they got that, they got that down pat and I just wanted to share that, the council to make sure it was in the minutes. And then I also wanted to thank DPW and the Fire Department again for keeping our roads safe, cleaning them up and doing what they can. Our community, I try to thank them on Facebook because. They sometimes don't realize that they appreciate that, so just wanted to. Do that as well. Other than that, I don't have anything. Do you want to also say, should I say town manager's report, I appreciate that the fire study is coming up. Since that was the last council, big thing that we wanted at the end. I think it's important that the council has some say on how much we're going to spend and how we're going to do it sensitive, a big piece of a community. So, thank you, Brian, and we'll consider to apply, Sarah Beth. Thank you.
Just going to echo what Colleen said about all the work our DPW crews, the past couple of days, a back-to-back storm, that's a lot, so. We don't have to thank Sarah Beth for that, but her son is, we can thank him because he may hire him and actually help her. She makes breakfast the other day, so we do a thank you for that as well.
Now, Chris?
Nope.
The next item on our agenda is public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit. We'll start in the room and then we will go to Zoom, so. Please come to the table, state your name and address.
Sean Lappin, one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. I was happy to hear about the Road Sell Task Force meeting later this month from earlier tonight. I think more transparency and more communication is a great thing. With that in mind, I would like to see more action and timelines, both of which I am hoping will be detailed in this upcoming meeting. This issue has been dragging on for years since twenty sixteen for myself, and I would like to have some sort of light at the end of the tunnel. I feel the town council would like to move on to other issues that affect the majority of the town rather than a few isolated individual properties. As I mentioned recently, if the town were to offer fair market value for my house, I'd be more than happy to sell it and walk away because as I mentioned earlier. And as was mentioned earlier in the public comment period, I cannot sell. People would not be able to qualify for mortgages because of the lack of potable water. And speaking with my realtor, she anticipates a sizable price reduction if I were to sell now without having a fix in place. Finally, I would like to suggest again, the town council look at one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road for a potential town land acquisition. Maybe some other use of the property can be turned by the town because the current use of private residence is clearly problematic. For the unexpected newly available ARPA funding, the town could easily pay for this, thanks.
Thank you, Sean. Jody, can we make sure Jody can unmute and speak?
Thank you.
You state your name and address.
Jody Coleman Marziale, seventy-nine Talon Green. And I just wanted to clarify something that the town manager had stated before. The sidewalk plan that was submitted was not from the Historic District Commission, it was never voted on. It was presented, discussed for, there was a discussion about having. Something different than the one and only plan the town manager submitted. Which had a five-foot wide stamped concrete straight path down the middle of the green. It was discussed at our June twenty-first meeting. On June twenty-second, I personally, on my own, submitted a plan because I had a discussion with the town manager. And he said, I said, can anybody submit a plan, it's nice to have options, we only have one on the table, nobody has ever. Said anything about putting one closer to the carriage road, he said, by all means, go for it, it costs money, good luck with that. And I happened to find a volunteer who was able to lay a red line plan on the one and only plan. That that he presented. And I would be happy to forward that to you, it was forwarded on June twenty-second, Colleen has a copy of it. Katie has a copy of it, Katie was at the meeting on June twenty-first, so she knows that this was never voted on by the Historic District Commission. At any time ever, it was my idea, my plan, and that's why my name is the only name on it. And so I just wanted to make that clarification because it seems like. There have been a lot of discussion about it and I just wanted to make sure that the truth is told. Also, my second comment was in the town manager's. Report dated January ninth, that just came out this morning, actually, down in the traffic and safety. Section on page fourteen. He talks about the intersection of Route seventy-four and Talon Green, which happens to be adjacent to my property. Several times I have asked the town for additional street lighting in this area. We have submitted to the ARPA Fund Subcommittee. Some additional historic style street lighting that we have, the historic green with the round globes on them. We've asked for two more lights and one of them is right at that intersection. And I've also talked to the Scott Lappin, the Director of Public Works. About contacting the state to possibly put an additional street light. On that telephone pole that is at that intersection. Every single accident that has happened has happened when it's been dark out, so lighting is definitely the problem here. And they've already put six signs there since these accidents has happened and I really think that lighting would be the way to go. Before, the final thing he says here is putting a rumble strip on the double yellow line. Because no matter how you turn. Somebody's always crossing the line, always, we had a tractor trailer truck go over the green the other, last week before the snowstorm, there's tire marks right across the whole green. So lighting is definitely the biggest issue here, so I would much rather see some additional lighting. Than a rumble strip, because I don't think the rumble strip is going to help, but lighting will. And people have talked about it on social media many times about how dark that intersection is. So that would be cost-effective and if the state will put it up there, it's free, so that would be great. So thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room? No, online then is Mary Rose. If you could unmute and state your name and address, please.
Oh, there we are, thank you, hi, it's Mary Rose Duberik, thirty-seven Ryan Road. I just wanted to thank you for reappointing me to the Blight Commission. It's actually an honor to work with the building official and his off, his office. I learned a lot about blight, we haven't had too many meetings, I guess it's fortunate for us. Because the building official really works with the residents of the town. And it's with folks that have issues. It's really that, that personal touch that is really special. Instead of. Going right for punitive, it's, he works closely with individuals that are experiencing blight to help them work through it. So it's an honor, thank you.
Thank you for serving, Mr. Barrett. Is there anyone else online who would like to make a comment? No, alright. The next item on our agenda is adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, second heard.
Do you give me the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Joe, is there any objection to adjournment, any objection, any objection, so without objection, we are adjourned, thank you very much.